Thank you. If I could ask everyone to please rise for the invocation and the pledges. And Pastor Lavelle is going to do our invocation this morning. And thank you very much for being here with us.
Well, thank you so much, Judge. Thank you very much. Let us pray. Father, according to your word, as the Apostle Paul says, I exhort first of all that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and reverence. For this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. For there's one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus, who gave himself a ransom for all. Father, you have instructed us to pray for our leaders. Therefore, I ask that you would endow these servants with wisdom and knowledge to do their jobs. I pray that you would help them to make good and godly decisions and give them not only physical support and our voices, but give them spiritual support. Cause them to know you in those ways that only those who spend time with you would know. We ask you to bless them with good ideas, novel ideas, practical solutions. We ask that you would always bless the work of their hands. I ask further that you would bless our county judge and all the commissioners, bless every one of them. And Lord, cause them to know that there are those of us who are praying for them and asking you to lead and guide them. Give them comfort and the assurance that you will never leave them, nor will you forsake them. And it is in Christ Jesus' name that I pray and thank you. Amen.
And I feel to mention he is with the Corpus Christi Christian Fellowship Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and
Thank you, and please be seated. It is August 21st, and we are at 9:01 leopard in the Oasis County Commissioners' courtroom. It is 9:07, and we have all commissioners present, so I will call this meeting to order. Do we have any announcements of disclosures of conflicts of interest? If you don't at this time, you can always mention it at the time the item is pulled up. Item E, adopt the following resolutions, proclamations, and orders. And number one, in recognition of August 26, 2024, as Women's Equality Day in honor of the League of Women Voters of Corpus Christi and in celebration of the 104th anniversary of women's right to vote. And Peyton is going to read that resolution for us.
Whereas Carrie Chapman-Cat founded the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan organization 104 years ago in 1920 during the convention of the National American Women's Suffrage Association. The convention was just held six months before the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution was ratified and certified, giving American women the right to vote after a century's struggle. In 1945, the League of Women Voters Corpus Christi area was formed with Dorothy Green serving as its first president. And whereas from the beginning of its existence, the League of Women Voters have been an activist grassroots organization whose leaders believe that citizens should actively participate in governance, advocacy, and voting. And whereas, the goal of League of Women Voters are to empower citizens to shape better communities worldwide, show respect for individuals and the value of diversity, and empower others to understand what makes democracy work. And whereas, the League of Women Voters acts with trust, integrity, and professionalism, operates in an open and effective manner to educate the public through voter guides and candidate forums, takes the initiative to engage voters and defend democracy, and acknowledges the League's heritage at every opportunity. And whereas, for 79 years, the League of Women Voters Corpus Christi area has built citizen participation in the democratic process by engaging communities promoting positive solutions to public policy issues through education, advocacy, and studying community and state issues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Oasis County does hereby proclaim August 26, 2024, as Women's Equality Day in honor of the League of Women Voters and in celebration of the 104th anniversary of women's right to vote, and furthermore encourages the citizens of Oasis County to observe this anniversary with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor women's history with their extraordinary contributions and accomplishments, duly adopted by the vote of Commissioners' Court of Oasis County, Texas on this 21st day of August 2024.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I think Brittany Young is here. Are you going to be speaking on behalf? Thank you, please.
Thank you, Judge Scott, for proclaiming August 26 as Women's Equality Day. It's really an honor. You're a testament to why we had to fight for our right to vote and continue fighting for our right to vote. You know, the right to vote is an ongoing fight, and we can't stop that fight. And the League of Women Voters is part of that effort through creating bilingual voters' guides that we did for the very first time this past election. We want to continue to do that work and continue to advocate for voting policies that make voting accessible to all Americans. So we want to thank you very much for taking the time to proclaim Women's Equality Day. And I hope that everyone goes out and votes in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. And we have this resolution if y'all would like to come up and take a photo, but on behalf of myself, thank you for what you do for women. Since I'm the only female.
Me too. I want to thank you too.
I was going to say, we try to do it for everybody.
Yeah. Everybody, for women.
Okay, we're going to take a couple.
Okay.
Yes.
Are we out?
Well, we'll charge you for one.
Ready? One, two, three.
Oh, my God, that is huge.
One, two, three. Last one. Promise. Thank you, officers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you ladies. Thank you for each other. Thank you. Thank you.
And everybody, remember to vote.
Yeah. Of course. Thank you. Well, I was going to take you too.
Ow.
Something I don't know.
Moving on to F, public comment, and we did not have anyone sign up for public comment.
Judge, put it down since JJ's not here. I just wanted to make one announcement.
Okay, sure.
Sign him up.
Sign me up. I'd like to make one announcement, and JJ is not here with veterans. The, just, I'd like to go ahead and invite everybody to join us at Bishop, Texas on August 27th. We'll be having a ceremony at Amistad Veterans Memorial Park honoring all our veterans and especially those veterans that from World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and that's a storm. So we're having a special ceremony. The veterans bands will be out there. We'll have maybe like, maybe five or six RV medical units out there that people can, while they're there, can go get their shots or get whatever they want to get, you know, to provide services. So we'd like to invite everybody. We're also working on the flyover. Hopefully, look like it's going to happen. So it's going to be a special, special event. And that's in August 27th at 10:00 a.m. in Bishop, Texas, at the Amistad Veterans Memorial Park. So we invite you and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who didn't have the opportunity to sign up that wishes to speak? If you would state your name and address, I'll add you to the board.
Thank you, Judge. The clipboard had been picked up before I was able to sign up. I appreciate you letting me do this. I'm Janice Hsu. Live at 3714 Topeka Street. And I would just like, again, to request the commissioners and the judge consider restoring full funding to Oasis County Department of Social Services to fully restand the refund, restore the funding for staff, for the full staff that unfortunately were eliminated, 12 positions, including a director and clerks and social workers and case managers, so that they can continue to do the work of serving Oasis County residents and helping hundreds of individuals, our most vulnerable populations, with basic need assistance that is so critically needed right now with our given economic times. I know you all have a very difficult job with the budget, and I appreciate that. And as the minister said, pray for you to carefully consider where cuts need to be made. I know a decision was already made to close the department September 30th, but I believe, like the minister said, we can always do what's right. It's never too late to do what's right. We can always pray about it. And I just ask that you all consider that. And if the decision remains, whatever county dollars that were allocated for the county social services, I request that you consider making that an open process if they are available for other community agencies in Oasis County to apply for, that it's a fair, transparent process, that it's not just given to one agency, because one agency may not be able to assist the hundreds of residents that have been helped each year. So I hope that that is considered as well, that it's an open process for agencies to provide information on how they can help our residents. And I just thank you again for letting me speak today. Thank you, Judge.
Moving on to item G, board appointments. Item number one, Oasis County Beach Management Advisory Committee. We had one resignation, and we have one new applicant, Michelle Lorette.
Judge, I would move appointment of Michelle Lorette to the Oasis County Beach Management Advisory Committee.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items in the consent agenda a commissioner would like further discussion on, would like to pull for further discussion?
I'm sorry to pull L.
L.
Judge, if there's nothing else to pull, I'd make a motion that we pass all the consent agenda items except L.
Judge, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I want to pull K.
K.
I would amend my motion.
Well, actually, I'm asking for the same thing you just mentioned, Ms. Chisney. So I, I'm wrong. Pull. I want to be pulling, pulling.
You're not going to pull K then?
No, I'm not going to.
Okay.
Okay.
I would keep my motion to pass all the consent agenda items but L. That would be my motion, Judge.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to pass all the consent agenda items excluding L. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item L, Commissioner Gonzalez, you pulled this one.
I'll pull L. I think this should have been a regular agenda item, because I think there's a lot of information that hasn't been given and needs to be given. So I don't know why it was put in a consent agenda. But anyway, I like to put it back on regular agenda for discussion.
Well, it's open for discussion now, so it doesn't.
As long as you can provide the information that we need on it, because.
This is like those others that FEMA called back on some of our grants, and we didn't have some paperwork attached, the anti-lobbying amendment certificates. This is just requiring additional paperwork for it. Anna was in here. Lulu and Anna, they did these on several last time.
I think here Judge should clarify, or is Lulu?
No, I don't. But we've done this on three or four other ones, that these are our grants that we've had that they have been going through, and there's no document in there for this. It's just a form that we have to get them to sign. Here's Anna. You can come up to the podium. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
On item L, on the consent, the additional paperwork approved amendment, number one, between Oasis County and ABM Industry Groups for Facility Cleaning Services. This is a no-cost time extension to include the FEMA required provisions of the BIRD anti-lobbying amendment. This is just a document that had to be attached, that just had to be signed.
Because the original contracts did not have that provisions, so we're going through a lot of request for information from TIDAM FEMA, and that's one of the requirements. And we're having to go back, even if we're no longer in that contract, they want that contract revised, amended, and purchase orders and everything.
So it's only about contract? It's not about monies that we owe, they owe us, or what?
These are invoices that we submitted for reimbursement, so it is contingent on all the requirements being met, and that's one of the requirements.
And did we submit this before already? Once already, or is this the second time we're going to do this?
We submitted the contract, but it did not have the amendments. It did not have those provisions, so we have to add those on.
When is the amendment going out?
When y'all sign it, we'll send it back to them.
I haven't seen nothing assigned, so I don't know where is that.
I sign it after y'all vote on it.
That's why it comes to court.
Yes.
So we can have the judge sign, and then we, we do give them the note that it will be going to court at a certain date, and we will provide the signature page as soon as we receive it back.
If you can come back with this one, I like to put this in the regular agenda next time if he comes back for discussion. You know, once we sign it and see what else they're asking for, I'd like to bring it back to regular session.
Okay.
And so, Anna, this, no cost?
No.
No time extension? Just a formality, basically?
It's a formality, yes. Because they didn't have two CFRs, there was a signature page missing, or, you know, all the conditions that FEMA requires for federal grants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll move it. Go ahead and pass.
Pass. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. On the regular agenda, 3A1, we are to receive an update on tentative and Oasis County legislative agenda, and Joel Romo and Patricia Shipton are both here. And they do an excellent job for us. Let me just begin by that. Thank you for both being here as well.
Well, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank y'all for letting us come visit with you. You know, we've had a little bit of an interim, not much. We've been super busy in the Capitol. Before we start with legislative agenda, I thought I would just give you a brief legislative landscape for the context of it. We've gone through some pretty contentious primary races in the Texas Legislature, both in the House and the Senate, much less so in the Senate. The House, currently a Republican majority with 86 Republicans, 64 Democrats, but that's, that's about average, or that's what it's been for the last couple of sessions. However, we had 16 incumbent legislators resign or retire, and in addition to that, another 16 who either lost their primary challenge or their runoffs. And so we will at a minimum have 32 new legislators in the House, which is not unprecedented, but it's bumping up there to a pretty bigger turnover than usual. So new faces, new attitudes, new agendas. The other thing that is kind of different and keeping us kind of on our toes is that the, one of those that faced a pretty significant Republican primary challenge was the Speaker of the House, narrowly made it back. He also faces some opposition within his House, and so his speakership is not a foregone conclusion. He has two announced candidates who have already announced their challenge. There are other names rumored out there, and so we anticipate that that too will change kind of the landscape and the harmony that we're hoping for in the House. I don't think it will be a very harmonious house. They will take a while to get themselves structured and ready. I think the biggest challenge that we will face next session is the unprecedented, and this is unprecedented, strife between the House and the Senate, and so that there is a tremendous amount of tension between those two houses. The Lieutenant Governor, Governor, Attorney General, and former President Trump all engaged in these primary races. They made them very contentious, very, spent a lot of money and a lot of endorsement effort in going after some of these incumbent challenger, or incumbent members. So all of that is going to set the stage for, I think, a difficult session. Some of the big issues that the state will face that they have outlined as a priority are school choice and vouchers, public school finance reform, utility regulation or grid stability, artificial intelligence issues, the responsibility of regulation, consumer protections, securing the Texas-Mexico border, continuing property tax reductions, and then maintaining election security. So all of those are big issues that the legislature has faced that candidates have said they want to prioritize. We hope to fit in our legislative agenda for Oasis County in some of those issues. And so Joel and I have been working with different departments, some of y'all, to outline some of those priorities. And I'm going to hand it over to Joel to kind of go through those.
Yes. Good morning. So thank y'all for having us. As Patricia mentioned.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
All right. So good morning. Thank you for having us, Judge and Commissioners. As Patricia mentioned, we've got, it's been a very busy interim. Gone are the days where the interims were quiet and you could hear the crickets in the Capitol. Now it's constantly meetings, interim hearings, and so we've had the opportunity to be there on behalf of your needs. What you have in front of you is a legislative agenda that we, some of this, some of these items will look familiar, some are new. We did visit with some of you that we reached out, that we were able to have conversations with in some of your departments. We also, based on some of the intel we've gathered from Association of Counties and other groups, we were able to modify some of these requests, the legislative agenda. So, you know, it is a working document. It is important. I think the timing is important, as Patricia mentioned, given the changes in the Texas House, new chairman, you know, we don't know what it's going to look like. The earlier we can get some more legislative requests through the legislative process and drafted, the better that puts us in a position. We have been working closely with our legislative delegation, Chairman Hunter, Senator Inahosa, Senator LaMontea, and surrounding colleagues. So the draft legislative agenda you have before you, you know, we did prioritize some things. Again, some of these items will look familiar. We're here today to kind of lay this out for you, however you would like to approach this, if you have questions or if you want us to go through. You know, we want to be respectful of your time, so we also, you know, we don't want to go line by line, but if they're, want to go by categories, we're happy to do this. Obviously, this is just kind of a document. We do envision on our end, we are happy to make any revisions and gather any input you may have here today and revise it and answer any questions. So we'll, before we proceed any further, we're happy to stop there to answer any questions on any of these items that was presented to you in the agenda when it was sent out with the posting last week.
I'm going to hold till the end. I'd like to hear maybe an overview, maybe not everything specific, unless the rest of the court wants to go through each item, but I'll wait till the end. Joel?
Sure.
I'm going to go ahead. We may be at the end, Commissioner. So I was going to say that it looks like we're very much defensive in posture, then offensive where it doesn't look like we've had too many ask. And I know that Texas Windstorm is going to be of the utmost importance for our community. And in this day and age in politics, and especially Austin politics, legislative politics, it's hard to find true cross-sectional bipartisan support, but this is one of them, right? And it's always funny when I tell people about Texas Windstorm, because most residents are attuned to it because they realize the big hit we're going to take once again, but they don't realize that Houston's out of the mix, that they've been excluded. So that was a very powerful ally that we could have had on our side, so it's kind of been chipped away. So it's us against the rest of the state. It's what, 14 counties basically, coastal counties roughly, and some maybe a little bit in the interior. But we're going up against the other 240 something counties. My concern is, is, well, I think Chairman Hunter has made it definitely a priority for him, and typically when he puts his name and mark on something, he's going to fight to the very end. So I'm thankful for that. What are our chances to make a change legislatively, or are the numbers stacked against us? I'd like for you to be honest. I mean, how much time should you be, I want you to be practical, right? And I mean, yes, put support that we need to, and obviously, we have some of our partners with the Sea of Corpus Christi here, and we're all in a, but I mean, do you see this something that we can actually fight and win?
So, so we have staved off a TUIA rate increase for the last two attempts, or three attempts, that TUIA has put that forth. So that is to our credit. I do think that, that we will have to take this to the legislature, and it will be a legislative decision. It's not a foregone conclusion at TUIA. Chairman Hunter was successful in, in pushing the Texas Department of Insurance to hold regional meetings on the TUIA issue to hear from the public, and so I think those are to be scheduled in the coming months. Hunter is, Chairman Hunter is pushing hard to have this become a legislative decision. I think that an unknown factor that we haven't been able to fully assess, Chairman Hunter is going to hold a hearing on the Panhandle wildfires that occurred last spring. Was that right? Anyway, but what occurred in the Panhandle brought home the need for these regional natural disasters and some entity to help mitigate those. And so what was often said in some of those early hearings on the Panhandle wildfire is, why don't we have an entity like a TUIA to help handle those? That's going to help us in a way to point to the needs of these are natural disasters and something that are outside the norm of regular insurance coverages, but it also is going to maybe expand the conversation and make it more difficult for people. So we've just got to assess that and kind of take it all in context. I do think we have to fight hard. I think we have some great allies in the Senate, in Senator Mays Middleton, which we haven't always had those great allies in the Senate, other than Senator Inahosa and Senator LaMontea. But it, so even though Houston is not part of this fight, that Galveston region carries some weight, and so I think we will get there. I think it's worth the fight is what I'm saying, I think.
And if I can add, we did attend the Galveston-TUIA hearing on behalf of the county, and there was momentum there from the area. Not all the coastal committees even came stronger in presence, but at the hearing that Chairman Hunter had last, this past Friday at the Capitol, a lot of lawmakers on his committee from the Panhandle or North Texas, their eyes were, their eyes became wide open on the issue of TUIA and how unfair it is. So I think there's colleagues who are going to be helping him get this issue resolved. And as Patricia mentioned, it's going to be probably, it may look a little different. It may not be TUIA, it may be a bunch of casualty issues. So we do foresee some changes, and we feel, you know, I think the efforts to put our support there are, you know, valid, and there will be some significant changes.
I think, I think, you know, in the area of natural disasters, what is starting to happen is for people from different parts of the state saying, there but for the grace of God go I. And so it's no longer just a coastal issue. It's becoming more apparent, whether it's flooding damages, or hurricanes, or wildfire disasters.
Hailstorms.
Hailstorms, exactly. Exactly. Everybody's kind of, so there is a little more sympathy in that, because people are experiencing their own natural disasters. Maybe not to the extent of a hurricane, perhaps, but they're, they are recognizing it.
And theirs are, more often than not, theirs are more frequent than the hurricanes on the coastal.
That's right. We know our season.
The costs are, yes.
Right.
And to piggyback on Windstorm, there's going to be significant efforts and focus on emergency preparedness, emergency management this session, given the Hurricane Barrel and others. I think Oasis County, from what we observed, was very well-prepared and, you know, fortunately was not impacted as significantly as Galveston. But overall, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of hearings also. And to piggyback on Windstorm, there's going to be significant efforts and focus on emergency preparedness, emergency management this session, given the Hurricane Barrel and others. I think Nueces County, from what we observed, was very well-prepared and, you know, fortunately was not impacted as significantly as Galveston. But overall, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of hearings also already on preparedness, power, et cetera. So, we do see emergency management being another one of those high-level issues important to monitor, and we're already been engaged with some of the lawmakers on those potential hearings coming up.
And we should have done this at the beginning, but I know you all are modest public servants, but if you could just name-drop for us who, what your background is, who you worked for before you became working for Nueces County in our lobbying efforts. Patricia, you want to start off?
Sure. I've been at the Capitol a very long time. I started as a very young staffer, worked my way through with various experience in different committee work, had been in a very large law firm as a researcher and a very junior lobbyist when Governor Perry asked me to come serve as his legislative director. I was one of six senior staff members on Governor Perry's first two terms in, or first two sessions, rather. First female, first Latina, first non-legislator to ever hold those positions, kind of proud of that. And then I left the governor's office, went and started my own lobby practice and did that representing various clients, when then Speaker Joe Strauss asked me to come in and be a senior advisor, kind of manage his legislative affairs and his office, and then was chief of staff to Speaker Strauss till he retired. And then have been back in private practice representing y'all and a few other clients.
Can you date us and tell us when you started in the legislature?
Oh, my gosh, all right. I don't care, I'm okay. I started as an 18-year-old in 1981.
Wow, that's awesome.
Just making sure. We crossed paths for a little bit there.
Yes, we did.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'm way older, so it's okay.
Everybody can do the math.
Yeah, yeah, I'm way, way older, it's okay.
Just short of retirement age.
Joel also, I mean, you're...
Sure, so, actually, yes, Commissioner Chesney and I also crossed paths at the building back when, back when you still used Xerox copy machines. I started, my first day, I joke with all my friends and colleagues, is my first day at the Capitol was the day they solved school finance. I was a sergeant, and here we are, we're still working on it. They passed the Lottery Act that day when I was on the House floor as a sergeant, and it was kind of interesting to say, oh, this is going to solve school finance, and here we are. But then I worked for a representative, Dan Kubiak, for about eight years, did his, was a chief of staff and worked on budgetary issues and higher education and just numerous issues. Then I went to work for a representative from the local area here, Representative Velma Luna. I was her chief of staff, left to lobby for two years, and then she needed a chief of staff, I needed some more time, so we, I came back in the House for a few more years and helped her on appropriations, and then left to go lobby for the American Heart Association for about 10 years, and then hung my own shingle out in 2015, have had numerous clients since then, and, you know, been working on, with behalf of Nueces County and other, you know, such as the Cooper Clinic out of Dallas, and American Heart, American Diabetes are still current clients as well, and so, but I also was, you know, probably 11 when I started at the Capitol, so...
Yeah, I'm 11 or 12.
And so, the reason for asking this is to stress a point of importance that the last couple of sessions at least, that there's been a mindset that government-paid lobbying efforts should be eliminated, right? And I think that there should be an internal debate, argument locally, as far as how much should be put into that effort. But the thing is that Nueces County has quality. We have, you know, some experts that have been able to open a lot of doors for us and be on our behalf, and we can't be in Austin. And it's not practical to be in Austin all the time, for us to travel and the cost included in that and to be there all the time. Now, we do make a lot of efforts, and we're one of only a handful of counties in this state that has a former legislator who is a part of that court and actually is the judge. So, Judge Scott makes a big difference with colleagues that she has to be there, but with you all being there as well, that helps us push our agenda when we can't always be there. We've all been called up, we all go on those special days, Coastal Bend Day, all the other days that we have that are up there. But it's important to have you there to represent us, to be the eyes and the ears on behalf of Nueces County in our efforts, as we share a lot of joint resolutions between the city, the school districts, all of the port, all the other entities, the RTA, all of those that have special legislation or funding that they are seeking for our community, because when one wins, our entire community wins. And so, it's so important that we continue to champion that issue. We know that the House, and I know that's why you focused on the House, because that was really where you both specialized in, but Patricia, when you mentioned how important that is, as conservative as it is, it's still the last barrier to protect government from having this opportunity, right? Not to have a huge lobbying team, not to go crazy on spending, but just to have advocates there, because it's not practical for us to be there all the time. So, please, continue to work on that, champion that issue, because I know it'll be under attack again, and hopefully, it could be staved off another year. But it's so important that we have this quality of representation there before us, and I thank you all for being here. It's always good to see you all in person.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And absolutely, the quality matters, and these, both of these individuals have stellar reputations throughout the courthouse, and my friends that still work there as well, we are very well represented, represented when you go and you talk on our behalf and you keep us in touch with things. But I've been up there, you've set up the meetings for me, and I cannot thank you enough for everything that you do, because we dash up there and try to do something in five minutes that you've been working on for weeks and months and sometimes...
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you all.
Judge.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I just, and I guess we need to, this is a receive update, so it's not an action item technically, but I guess we need to vote on this at some point, so we have to, I guess, put this on the next agenda. One of the areas that we've been discussing in the committee that you formed, Judge, in regards to the medical community was to provide some support, I know the hospital district's going to be working on this in conjunction probably with SPON, but to support some legislation, meaning put forth some legislation, not just support in conjunction with the hospital district to find any additional funds to help with, to help with, or supplement funding related to doctor recruitment and retention, including but not limited to the graduate medical programs that we've been working on so diligently in this community, and, what's that? Oh, sorry, I was, you couldn't hear me. Anyway, I'm not saying it again, but anyway, so I would like to consider or put that on the item or the proposed agenda, and then I guess we'll put it back on to vote on the next, so that everybody can digest it and see it and so forth. But I would like to add that one on, and I can, I'll email you guys some verbiage, and I apologize, I've been one of the ones who hadn't had honestly just the time to get with you, because everything's been so crazy around here. But, you know, the rest of these priorities look very good to me. That would just be one I'd like to add for consideration for the court to consider as part of the agenda.
Is that the education and trauma care partnership program? Trying to find some additional funding in that, under that legislation?
It's part, Johnny's going to have to explain it to you. I don't know where it goes, we just, it's part of it, but there's additional parts, I think, that will come along with it, and I would ask you to get with Johnny Hip, who's sitting on the front row, is kind of working with SPON in conjunction of that. But part of it is, you know, as you followed, the hospital district made a huge commitment to keep doctors in this community and keep graduate medical programs in this community, which is, which is so important to the, not only the indigent care in this community, but just the community. But we want to be able to find funds to supplement those, to get those dollars back in the hospital district's pocket and not have to be paid out if possible. That also would be very good for this community, and I think Johnny and SPON thinks there are some vehicles, the hospital district, not just Johnny, the board, the hospital district thinks that there are some vehicles to do that. But I think it would require some legislation, and I'd just like to put that on for consideration. And, you know, I'm, the judge and Commissioner Matas have spoken about how great you are and stroke your egos and all that. Hopefully, you feel good leaving here, because we do, we wouldn't keep hiring you if we, you know, didn't think that. So, I concur with what they said, I won't repeat it, not because I don't believe it, I concur because I agree and enjoyed the time that we worked together as colleagues in the Capitol, and I really do know you all do a great job and appreciate your hard work, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we won't get too beat up. You know, counties have a tendency to unfortunately get the wrath, and sometimes it's intended and sometimes it's not, of these unfunded mandates and these great ideas that they come up with, that I support a lot of the great ideas they come up with, but I wish there was some funding mechanisms and some thought given to the effect it's going to have on the counties, and so watching that carefully is always crucial. So, thank you, appreciate you being here, and thanks for your work.
Sometimes they legislate for one big 3 million population county as opposed to all of the 254, and that, we get caught up in that sometimes.
Yeah, and I'll never, you know, Commissioner Matas touched on it, I'll never understand excluding Harris County from the whole TUIA thing, because I don't even know how they get covered, because they get hammered probably much or more than anybody in the state of Texas, and how they're not in the Windstorm pool is just kind of staggering to me. So, it is hard. I mean, you would think, you know, you would think, you know, we would be, you would come up with a system that would share equitably with people, because there's, last time I checked, there's a lot of tornadoes up in the DFW area and at least warnings and things of that nature. There's a lot of wind events, you know, in east, you know, rural Texas, and I just don't get it. I think it would completely change the landscape if there was, you know, just an equitable sharing, and that's all, I think, really the whole pitch has been for as long as I can think about it. I've worked on this issue my entire adult life, honestly.
You remember, right.
Yeah, I mean, going back to my days as chief of staff for Todd Hunter, I mean, literally my entire adult life, being back in Corpus Christi, other than a couple, three years, my first job, I, and I don't think we're, I don't think it's ever going to stop, I think we're going to be working on it forever, because it is so inequitable right now, and, you know, Commissioner Matas asked a great question, do you think we have a chance of winning? Boy, that's a real, that's a real subjective, you know, I don't know what winning is. I think winning is not losing in this case, and not getting hammered for something more. So, anyway, thank you all for your time, and I'll move forward.
Thank you all.
I would just like to add one thing, just remember, the filing, the first day of the bills can be filed, it's Monday, November 11th, which is the Monday after the election. First day of session is January 14th.
Well, I think, yeah, I think the hospital district's going to lead on it. I don't know that we have to draft any legislation, I think it's just more of adding, I say, I guess support would have been the right word, but I think for what I'm talking about at least, if the court supports it, would be just, we've got to, you know, we just want to support whatever they're doing and really support it strongly, assuming if the court votes for it. I'm not trying to get ahead of myself, but if the court votes for it, then that would be something, so I didn't see a lot on here that we would be actually filing bills on two or three things, but most of it's defensive, as John said, Commissioner Matas said, and that's, unfortunately, that's what most of the legislative process is, is being defensive. It's a lot harder to pass a bill than it is to kill a bill than, in my experience, and thankfully, because there's so many bad bills that get filed and so many bad things that get filed, and fortunately, it's a little, it's not easy, but it's easier than passing something. To pass something is just, you know, really, really hard unless it's a local bill that everybody signs off on, et cetera. But anyway, sorry, I'll move on. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you both. Thank you for being here as well in town.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item two, receive a presentation from Belinda Flores, Medical Lead on the Nueces County Operation Health and Wellness event that was held July 22nd through the 27th, so.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us this time. We did want to share and recognize our local partners and the county for great work that we did this year. This is called Nueces County Operation Health and Wellness, and it's, if you'll move on, can I do my own slides or?
You can just tell her.
Okay, can you forward? Thanks.
That's a big ask, Bill. We don't let the, you know, we don't let people just...
I'm like, I need a clicker. Can somebody give me a clicker? So, a little bit of history about Operation Health and Wellness. It started back in 2021, and it was called an IRT, the Innovative Readiness Training, and it was a partnership between the United States Department of Defense, Texas A&amp;M University Colonia's program brought it to Nueces County, and Nueces County partnered with the military and the local partners to make this mission happen. And so, what it is, it's a two-week clinic, or it started as a two-week clinic, of course, the preparation was months and months, but the clinic was two-week clinic to provide services to anybody that walked in the door. So, the mission consisted of medical, civil affairs, engineering, and cybersecurity. The other parts of this mission were being done at the same time as our clinic was, but I'm going to focus on the Operation Health and Wellness, is what we did. So, with the clinic, we provided medical, dental, behavioral health, vision, and veterinary services. And we had, for the four years, the first year we had five sites throughout the county, the next year we had four sites, the following year four sites, and this year, the military did not have funding to do Operation Health and Wellness, even though they were going to be here, they didn't have funding to come and help with this mission. So, we had a meeting, Commissioner Gonzalez approached us and said, I'd like for this to continue, and let's see if the partners can do it. So, our local partners, we all met and got together and made it happen. It was a week long normally, and so for the week that we had, we had medical, vision, behavioral health, and veterinary services. We tried to get dental, but the military normally brings about 30 to 40 a dentist. To get 30 to 40 dentists in our community is very difficult to volunteer. And so, that was one area that we're going to look into for future years to come, but it was very successful. You want to move on to the next slide? And so, it was six days, three sites, we had 379 patients that we served. When the military was here, we had 658 last year, so this year, and it was two weeks, and for this year, it was a week and we had 379 patients. We were able to provide over 1,700 services. We made referrals to, and different resources, to resources in our community that many times people don't even know about. And then, of course, the pets. Pets have become part of our family. For anyone that has a pet, you know that we take very good care of our pets, so we had over 1,000 pets that people brought, families brought, and over 3,000 services that we provided for the pets. Next slide. So, one more? Thank you. So, our locations were West Oso Junior High, very grateful to West Oso for always being a partner. The Calderon Building in Robstown, which that beautiful clinic really helped with, it was already ready, so we were able just to kind of move in and start serving patients. And then Mission of Mercy, Mission of Mercy provided all the vision care, the screenings, operations, they did several operations on individuals and then provided classes. There was also a partnership because of the county with a couple of eye place, eyeglass places where people were giving, given vouchers, and then they could go get their glasses filled. Next slide, please. So, services, just to give you an idea, for medical services, we did routine visits, we did acute visits, physicals, behavioral health, and women exams. These are the vital signs that we did as well, blood pressure, BMIs, A1Cs, and cholesterol. The vision, we, like I said, we provided eye exams, glasses, reading glasses, and then the vouchers, and then others, immunizations, prescriptions, Texas, South Texas Family Planning and the Texas A&amp;M Pharmacy School helped provide prescriptions as long, as well as Methodist Health Ministries, when there were, there was several patients that couldn't afford their prescriptions, and we didn't have the medications there, so they covered those costs. So, everything was done at no cost. Driscoll Health Plan came and gave backpacks to kids, and then, well, there are the pets. Next slide. So, again, this is just by site, another breakdown, I won't go through it, through it, but it just shows the 1,727 services that we provided. Next slide. The different zip codes, most of the patients came from the 78380, Robstown, 78415, 78416, and 78410 are where the majority of patients that were cared for, those are the areas. Next slide. A couple of success stories. Medications were provided at no cost, so no one left when they were seen for something acute, you know, they were treated, and then, so that was great for the patients, because it was, many times, many of our patients go to the ER because they couldn't afford their medication, so here, we provided the entire, entire service from caring for the medications, you know, and then follow-up. One of the follow-up care stories that I want to share is one that Dr. Loyka saw, and she saw several patients, and then she was going to work on Saturday at Amistad there in Robstown, and so they were going to follow up with her. So, not only she treated, you know, these patients, and then they were going to follow up with them. South Texas Family Planning, same thing, we had patients that needed to be followed up, and they were following up on the patients. So, patients weren't just seen and said, oh, well, good luck with whatever you have, you know? weren't just seen and said, oh, well, good luck with whatever you have, you know. No, they were assigned to one of our FQHCs, to South Texas Family Planning. We were able to provide clinic cards to those that needed, that could qualify, and so they could have follow-up care. There, I was in Robstown one of the days that I was there, and Dr. Loica had called an ambulance because one of the patients was needing to be transferred to the hospital. So that as well. And then one story that stuck with me at West Oso was this grandmother that brought her teenage, teenage granddaughter, and with a teenage granddaughter that had a really bad skin condition, acne. And the girl had all her hair on her face, and she just didn't talk much. She just kind of nodded and stuff. And the grandmother said, you know, she needed care. But the beauty of it, that she was able to be cared, her skin condition, she was given medication, they treated her. And then since we had somebody there to talk to her, a counselor sat and talked to her. So when, believe it or not, when she left, she just said, thank you. And she hadn't said a word to us before. So that was really, really nice. And MHD was going to continue to visit with this young woman. Next slide. So again, cost savings. This is just from what the military had done last time. They said X amount of patients, 600 and some patients for X amount of dollars. I made, I divided to see what amount that would be per patient, divided to the patients that we saw for medical vision and veterinary services. And it was a total of about, on average, $376,000. And the patient satisfaction, obviously priceless because the people that we saw are people that didn't have insurance and didn't have somewhere to go. But now, they had been, they had been referred to a clinic for follow-up care. Next slide. Next slide. I want to thank, yeah. We also had a website. I want to thank Kirsten. She put a website together. She started putting it on social media. So this is the first time, it was a new thing for us, that we had a website so people could visit. And it was going out on social media because everybody's on social media, apparently, except for me. But other than that, people could access our information. Next slide. Here are partners. There's lots of them. Next slide. And so again, Doctor, Commissioner Gonzalez always says it takes a village. Yep, it took a village, but it was a great success. Next slide. Thank you so much. Just a few pictures from our operation. I do want to recognize, where did he go? Jose Luis. He's with Texas A&amp;M Colonias Program as well, just to finish our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. And my name is Jose Luis Gutierrez, Regional Director for the Colonias Program. And I just, I come in here for one specific reason. I want to commend each and every partner that is here because this is my 22nd IRT mission that I've been able to work with. And I have never seen anywhere other than Oasis County how a great partnership with all the partners that came in, institutions, nonprofits, hospitals, doctors, all the agencies that came in, did such a fabulous job. And not just once, but they've been doing it now for four years. I've never seen this anywhere else before. And I think it's important that they be commended. And so this is our one minute of fame that if you're one of the partners that did part of this project, can you please stand up just to be recognized? Yes. Unconditional commitment from these people. They did a fabulous job. They worked really, really hard together. I have never seen this anywhere else before. So I think that it's important. I got certificates for them that we will give them outside. But Judge, I got one for you all for the county.
Thank you.
For the recognition that you all have done. But I also want to make sure that I recognize one thing that you all have done that's been great.
You guys can sit.
Jose, you can, you can call the certificates out if you want to in here.
Well, what I want to do is, what you all have done is also amazing because the information and data that you all have collected over the years, you all are now responding to the needs and demands of people. The Calderon Building, that you've created a medical facility. And the same thing happened in Webb County, that they, that they had the same situation. They built one medical facility in an area that's 45 miles from the city of Laredo. But then recently, they just received like $4 million to build a 12,000 square foot facility to provide medical services for people in the area. So what we've also noticed in this missions is that these people that are coming in only come and see the doctor once a year, and that's when they're here with you all. And what you all are doing is providing medical services where it is hard to get medical services out to the community. So I just want to thank you and commend you all. So Bill, where are you? You want to go forward?
Sure.
You read them out, and I'll give it to them.
Okay. So the Oasis County Hospital District, Texas A&amp;M, Kingsville, the Pharmacy School, the RTA, West Oso ISB, if y'all want to come, Voices of the Colonias, Oasis County Animal Services, Gulf Coast Humane Society, Edgar and Ivy's Cat Sanctuary, Veterinary Treatment Facility, Mission of Mercy, South Coastal AHEC, yay, my office, Amistad Community Health Center, Corpus Christi Metro Health Ministries, Driscoll Health Plan, Texas A&amp;M College of Nursing and Health Sciences, Methodist Healthcare Ministries, Texas A&amp;M University Coastal Bend Health Education Center, South Texas Family Planning, Oasis County, Oasis Center for Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities, Christus Spawn Hospital, Physicians' Premier ER. And also, I want to thank the City of Corpus Christi, Oasis County Health Department, because they provided all the iPads and information, the IT information. So really grateful for that. Thank you, Dr. Con. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Cassandra, is that one for the judge there?
Yes.
Should I have it?
Yes. Judge, while we're waiting, I remember asking probably within, well, a year probably before this. And I remember asking Commissioner Gonzalez, so you getting ready for the IRT? He said, no, we don't have it this year. And I said, oh, no. He goes, don't worry. He goes, everything's on automatic pilot now. All these groups have worked together for all these years. We've built up our, our, our pool of, of resources, and we're going to do it ourselves. And that's, I remember in the early days when we were talking with Mr. Gutierrez and the group from the Colonias Program from Texas A&amp;M University, and thanks to the, to the university system for their support on this. But I remember always hearing about Webb County. And they were really the ideal example of how this program can and should be rolled out. And I thought, that's what we need to achieve. But we have achieved our own greatness in a certain way that we are self-sustaining. Now, we want this back, and we know that we're going to get the IRT back. But the fact that we could do this on our own, and this will be continual, that is something to be proud of. And it wouldn't have happened without these partners. And of course, thanks to Commissioner Gonzalez for taking the lead on this.
Real quickly, last year, when we finished the last mission, we knew that they were not coming. And I got to point the finger to somebody. We're walking out after the mission was over, and Dr. Loica came up to me, and she goes, you know, Mr. Gutierrez, I just want you to know something. We know that they're not coming, but we could do this even if they don't show up. So I want to give her the credit for getting it started because she started it. Thank you.
You go ahead and take a picture, Judge. Can the group come up here and take a picture?
Would you all like to come?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Can we grab a couple people that are down here, and can y'all go up there? That way we can squeeze y'all all in the same picture?
We'll go upstairs.
A few people go upstairs, or you can take the picture.
How are you?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank y'all.
I'll stand on a chair.
I'm sorry. Can you come on this side, please?
Yeah, come on over here.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we can see everyone.
Right here, man.
Thank you, sir.
You get there, and I'll get behind you.
Thank you, sir.
Can you see RJ?
Yes.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Got to fix John's teeth.
Yes. Moving on to.
Judge, before, I'd like to make one quick announcement.
Yes.
I'm over here.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Just real quick, we are already planning for '25. And I think we're planning with the Air Force has had made some commitments, that they want to be part of the IRT. And in fact, we've already started communications. So, but like everything else, I know we like to pass batons. So maybe we can pass my baton to somebody else up here. They can take my baton.
To take it over.
Take it over, so.
How about we just rename the baton, the Joe Gonzalez baton, and you keep it forever? Come on, man.
So anyway, but anyway, thank you, guys. Everything, appreciate you.
Thank you, yes.
Love you.
Now, moving on to item number three, discuss and consider the approval of a 90-day renewal for a Doom protection permit. It's my understanding, and you all may correct me if I'm wrong, this is just for the allotted time to complete the house building or something. So, yes.
Oh, you're here.
Oh, yes. I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
This has already been approved before. This is just extending the time because the house is not finished. So we have a motion and a second to pass. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, discuss and consider the adoption of the Oasis County Texas Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan on behalf of Oasis County. And I believe each of you got this map sent to you, and we need a resolution to adopt the map.
So moved, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Number five is you also. So stay there. Discuss and consider a license agreement for a temporary staging area for the Texas State Aquarium for staging their vehicles in an emergency and some of their equipment. And we found they're in a very low-lying area and needed space. And we have this parking lot over here across. And some others have given us covered parking lot in the other way. So we like to help out our neighbors as well. So we just have to have these agreements in place to be able to do this. So I will make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I know you're here. Did you want to say?
I think Mr. Gilbert would like to say a few words.
Yes.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for considering this. This, and Dee for her leadership. This is not only for the aquarium as an attraction, but really, the Wildlife Rescue Program wants to becoming more of a, an asset for the state of Texas. And so what we experienced on North Beach during Tropical Storm Alberto, flooding, we had TIDAM rescuing people out of their homes there. And so for our continuity of operations, particularly in the Operations Center for the aquarium, this is vitally important. So we appreciate your consideration. And thanks, Dee, for her leadership on this.
Thank you for being here today as well, and for everything that you do over there for the animals as well.
Thank you.
And we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The same sign. The motion passes. Item number six is our duty as well. Discuss and consider appointment of election judges for voting centers pursuant to Section 32.002 of the Texas Election Code. And both parties, the Republican and the Democrat Party, have sent in their list. It is behind, and they can make, I guess they can make changes to this through care if any changes need to happen. But make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. The auditor, can we pull up F1? I know Mr. Hip is here, and he needs to get back to some business. If he could, can we do ours versus the, discuss and consider setting the proposal for the 2024 tax rate for Oasis County, and Oasis County Forum de Market? Can we just do the hospital district so he can get out and we can come back to it? Would that be okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
F1.
F1.
This, the proposal for the ceiling rate, this is not.
Setting the highest rate that they kind of can pass with, with, once the item comes up on September 11th, you can definitely vote below that rate, but you cannot vote above it after this level. So working with Johnny, working the balance through what his proposals are, he did mention in his presentation, he'll probably be using a lot lower rate than what we're going to be proposing. But he asked me to recommend using the voter-approved rate at .097012.
But just to be clear, this is not us voting on the rate. This is just keeping our options open moving forward while we're looking. This requires a record vote as well. So.
Question?
Yes.
You indicated at the presentation that you anticipated the no-new tax rate being proposed as your final rate. Is that still your anticipation?
That's, that's correct, Commissioner. We're suggesting, it suggested to Dale, a use of the voter-approved tax rate. As a cautionary measure, we do this every year. And every year, we've asked you to adopt that rate. We've always come back at the effective tax rate. And so that's what we intend to do, Commissioners, as I stated the other day. But the days between now and when the court approves the tax rate and the budget are what I refer to as days of innovation. And so things could come along that we didn't anticipate that were new and unknown to us along the way. So the voter-approved tax rate would be, I think, a good cautionary measure. But I don't foresee anything at this point that would suggest that the district would need to do any more than the no-new revenue tax rate.
Does this just get a record vote, or do we have to have a motion and a second?
If a motion and a second, take a record vote, that's correct.
I'll make the motion to approve for the hospital district.
It's just proposing the rate, not adopting.
Just proposing the rate. This is not adopting the rate.
Since this rate is above, the no-new revenue taxes will require public, publishing and public hearings.
Yes. But you're not anticipating that. This is only allowing discussion for it moving forward and not limiting or hindering your opportunity if so need find. Yes. So I made a motion. Commissioner Moda, seconded.
Your, your motion needs to state the rate.
Oh, I don't have it in front of me, do I?
.097012.
.097012 is my motion to set the rate for the hospital district. I made the motion. Commissioner Moda, seconded. Commissioner Hernandez, how do you vote?
I propose that we state the no-new tax rate.
I propose that we state the no-new tax rate.
Into the microphone, please.
The no-new tax rate.
And, and to be clear, this is only leaving, proposing. This is not the tax rate, setting the tax rate yet. This is just allowing us all to go in and work on our budgets, and it doesn't hinder them from being able to utilize it, so.
Yeah, then let's go into budget and let's see what we get.
So are you voting yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Chesney?
Abstain.
He was the second on the motion, so, yes. Yeah, yeah. It's like I assumed he was fine. Yes, so we will come back to the rest of this later on. I was just trying to get Mr. Hip out. He has some other business he needs to attend to so that he didn't have to sit here and wait, so.
Commissioners, thank you all. Look forward to coming back to you all to present the district's budget when you all take final action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Item number seven, discuss and consider approving the application process to nominate up to five qualified candidates to be listed on the ballot for the five positions to be filled on the Appraisal District Board of Directors for the term beginning in January. So we have previous, we've had an election this past year that gives us three members, so right now we have 12 members. That is going to go down as of January with this cycle. So, I've had a meeting with the Appraisal District, I've talked to Jenny, our county attorney, I've talked to Kevin Kishnik, and this is the process. We will have directors moving forward. There are five directors throughout the county that will be placed, but there are only five. It is not one entity going to nominate anymore. There will be five names. Each of us, the entities, the voting entities can all produce, this year since it's going to be five, can all have five names on the board. We have to go out for applicants, people that want to be here and to serve on this board. After we receive these names back, we get our names, we turn them into the appraisal district, and they then compile the list of all the voting entities that sent the names in. They will make a list. Once we get the list back from them, we will have the opportunity to cast our votes. And if you will look in the backup, it shows Oasis County will have 700 votes. We can cast those votes 100% towards an individual, or we can do it selectively, so many votes per person if we want to, whatever. The candidates with the top five votes are the appointed directors. This would be the same challenge in the future. If there's an opening on there, this would kind of go the same process, but there would only be one. But for the upcoming appointments, two will serve for one-year terms and three will serve for three-year terms. I think I listed everything on there correctly, Jenny.
Judge, what is the percentage that a person needs to get to get enough votes to get on? Because...
I guess you could...
Because the reason I'm asking is because I've been told that it might be better for Oasis County because we don't have enough votes to split our votes and for sure get someone on. To split our votes and for sure get someone on, so I need some, not today, but I need someone, I've read this, but I'm still not clear on...
I'm ready to confuse them.
Right, I'm still not clear on if, if we cast all 700 votes for one person, does that get enough? And I'm not saying we are, I'm just saying, we just need to know. If we cast all 700 votes for one person, does that assure us a, someone getting on because that is enough of a percentage? Because we get 14% of the total, so I didn't see that in this explanation? So I still think the court needs some clarity on that, because we can certainly nominate up to five and then cast 100 here and 150 here, but then we take a chance that we get nobody on, is what I've been told, but I'm not sure I'm right, and I didn't see it in explanation. So I kind of need to know, not, again, not today, but I would kind of like to know before we start nominating people.
Why, the nomination process doesn't change. There are five directors, so, yes.
My bad, before we start voting.
All of this comes back afterwards when we get the list of names.
I apologize.
It will depend as well whether there's, how many names are. There may be a limited number of names on there as well, so. I, I think this is all very new, and I think we're going to figure it out as we go, but you can count the total number of votes, and if you maybe, but it depends, they could cast their votes 100% for one person as well, so.
They could.
So someone with a smaller amount of votes with whatever's left over could possibly win because you've cast all your votes towards one person. So it's really kind of depends on what everybody else does. I don't know that you can get a figure that answers your question.
I don't either. I just didn't know if there was a minimum amount, or if someone got 13%, they'd get in, or I just, I get, you know, this is another one of these well-intended legislative changes that's a little goofy, so. This is not well-intended. This was done deliberately.
The filing with the county judge to begin with was bad, yes.
And, and this was to hurt local government, and this is not well-intended at all. This was intended for chaos, and that's what it's created unfortunately. And we stand as the third-largest taxing entity in valuations to lose out and not have representation what we did before. Now, that's the argument we should have had a year and a half ago there in Austin, but it is what it is. I tell you, I know CCISD does this. They actually have like a tenth of a percentage point to vote in San Patricio County's appraisal district, and they've always had to vote this way. So it's kind of done, so some entities locally know how to do it, but I agree, we need to see what the ballot is and then cast our vote. I would say put them all behind one, but I guess we'll have to wait and see who, who the names are first, but it's, it's going to be a game of politics to, I don't know how we formally could try to work with other entities to make sure that we ensure we get a representative there that's all-inclusive of the county. And we should be. Of all those entities, we, of anyone, should have representation since we, I mean, all those boundaries fall within us. They're all portions, a partial part of ours area that we represent, so I'm really concerned. But I think that if everyone holds to their own votes, then we should still be able to get a representative.
A person, yes.
If we hold to our votes.
And one also that changed is...
You mean if we vote for, John, are you saying? All chips in, all 700 votes in for one person. Yeah, I mean, to me, that's, sounds like...
That's not a guarantee. That's not a guarantee, but we also, that being said...
No, it's not a guarantee, but I'm saying that's the best... It's still not a guarantee, but...
Tax assessor-collector Kevin Kishnik is now a voting member of that as well, so we, we have something as well. Yes. Where before, he was not a voting member.
Good. That's a big, that's a big win for County for sure. It helps.
So, I need a motion to approve the application process, so.
Some move.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez made the motion. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
I'm going to abstain on this, I don't know. I really don't read, it's not clear to me what we're doing. I mean, I really, like, I don't have any time.
Well, it's, yeah, it's the way the law set it up for this time, so, yes. So, we have one abstain, yes. Moving on to item eight, discuss and consider allocating the Countywide American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, unallocated funds in the amount of $138,971 for our, this year's bill on the MetroCom 911 dispatch program, and we used ARPA funds previously for this. Lulu has been in here and it is, oh, on us here, and it is an allowable use of it, and it takes care of our debt for MetroCom for this year. Part of our increase, sorry, not our debt, let's be clear. It's a much larger amount, yes.
Some move, Judge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number nine, discuss and consider unallocating $13,000, $13,100 from Precinct 2 Commissioner Gonzalez's funds as follows. Oasis County Amistad Memorial Restoration Repairs, $5,000, and for the People Assisting Animal Control PAC for $8,100 and other related matters.
I don't know, we can include the $9,000. We had allocated for animal control, but we couldn't use it. We had, they wouldn't allow us to use it, so that probably needs to be also reallocated back to my balance. So I'd like to move that we add the $9,000 to it.
Add the $9,000?
Yeah, to reallocate it back to my balance.
From Animal Services, or that?
Yeah, Animal Services.
So basically, you're just saying the ones on here plus the $9,000, that's your motion?
Yeah.
Is that clear, Karen?
And it's all going back to your funds?
Right.
Yes. Okay.
I second the motion. Is that clear for the county clerk there?
So, yeah, so it's $5,000, $8,000, or something?
Yeah, plus $9,000. What's on here, plus $9,000.
What's five, $8,100 and nine, so it's 13,1 plus nine?
Right.
Good. I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number 10, discuss and consider approving the award and execution of an ARPA-funded contractor agreement with DLF2 for Parker Pool Maintenance Repair Project in the amount of $531,909.
Motion to pass or approve the award and execution of an ARPA-funded contractor agreement with DLF2 for Parker Pool Maintenance Repair Project in the amount of $531,909, 21. $531,000, it's my ARPA funding, yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second.
Just a question real quick.
Yes.
Edward, I just want to get it out there. You and I talked about it, but can you give me kind of a, public who are watching, if you can give a little construction schedule on how this will go, please? So, as we discussed, Commissioner, we, once we get the...
Push the microphone up, please.
Once we get the approval today, then we'll issue the notice to proceed on Monday, and that'll start the process, but we'll wait till September the 5th to actually start doing any type of construction after Labor Day. And so there's lead time on Sunday, so it works with our schedule. Thank you. I just want everybody to know. Thank you, Judge.
I'd like to clarify something. The entire $531,909 is not ARPA funds because only $550,005,37 was allocated towards the Parker Pool. There were COs involved, so part of the, the only, after the engineering cost, it was $480,734 left with the ARPA allocated funds.
Teresa, just, we, some of that was my COs too, I think, right? I mean, it was all, it was all Precinct 4 funding.
Right, they allocated part of the, the CO monies under ARPA. It just has to be reallocated. It has to be corrected, but this will be fully funded under ARPA.
Not fully funded under ARPA.
Yeah, yes, it is. We switched it around and we, that's what we're, that's what we're doing. We moved it around. I allocated more money from my ARPA funds to cover the excess that we needed for this project, is my recollection, Teresa, is that right?
The 210, so we had divided it 70,000 on each of your projects, so you want to just complete the ARPA funding completely with this? We had put 70,000 towards the Parker Pool, 70,000 towards your detention pond and project, and then 70,000 towards the bridge widening.
The 210,000 of allocated was to go to all three projects as needed?
Actually Bob Hall, not, but not bridge widening. It was as needed.
As needed, okay.
Right, so we allocated 210,000 to Bob Hall, not the bridge widening, to Bob Hall, to Parker Pool, and to London Drainage. Then Edward came back very shortly thereafter with the amount that it would require, and so since that had already been allocated, we shifted those funds, and we're doing it here too in court, we shifted those funds, I think it was about 50,000, right, Edward?
51,365.
That, to fully fund it, so I believe this is fully funded with ARPA.
That is correct.
Okay, we'll make the change in our reporting.
Okay, because, yeah, that'll still leave me 160,000 for either London Drainage or Bob Hall period, depending on what's needed, and the court's already voted on that as well.
That's right.
Okay.
And we already had a motion and a second and voted, right?
We, we didn't vote. We motioned and...
We had a motion and a second, okay. Now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. You seconded it, sorry.
Don't include no COs in this.
No, it does not.
We're good. Thank you. Item number 11, discuss and consider utilizing right-away funds in the amount of $250,000 to cover the construction improvements to FM 624 Northwest Boulevard from Wildcat Drive to County Road 73. And I make the motion to pass. Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez, is this yours, you good with that?
Yes, are you gonna...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I'm just making sure you're good with it.
I made the motion to pass, so.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, Judge, this is for the road and safety expansion of FM 624, and one will let us know more about it. Is this a correct number?
Judge and Commissioners, this is part of the road widening for FM 624. It ties into one of our, one of our county roads, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
The future winding. It ties in, I think they're spending over $50 million on this road winding. This is part of County Road 69 that ties in the intersection of 77, and it goes into that elementary school. There's an exhibit that's attached, and what they're planning on doing as part of this is they're planning on doing a right-turn lane into the elementary school. Right now, there's some issues regarding the stacking of the cars and also on the right-turn lane going out onto 624. So this will be a safety and improvements out to our road and also to the elementary when they're, when they're dropping off the kids at the school.
How much is in that fund? How much do, would we have, will we have left after this?
I think there's about 900, oh, no, I'm sorry.
And this, that's what this fund is supposed to be used for, so.
That is correct, Judge.
Yes, so. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Item number twelve, discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners Court meeting dates, and I, um, saw one that we didn't have. The public hearing, September the fourth, on our list that needs to be added. I think, I've already talked to Tara, and she's going to include that, but we're required to have a public hearing, September the fourth. Any other?
Uh, that was already on our list, you said, right?
It's on my calendar, but they didn't have it on theirs for some reason.
It was just the tax hearing only, right? It wasn't an agenda?
Yes.
I mean, it wasn't a.
On the planning list?
No, I'm saying, but it's just purely the tax hearing that day, not a regular agenda.
That's correct, yes. That's a public hearing, yes.
So if we need a motion to add it, I've got it on mine too, but I had it just as a tax hearing only.
It wasn't on their list, so we should probably do a motion. It's a motion to add Commissioner Chesney, I'll second that.
That's for tax hearing only?
Yes.
No other agenda, okay.
Yes, it should be, yes. And nine AM start is fine?
Fine by me.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
September fourth?
Aye. Any opposed?
September fourth.
Same sign?
It was on the planning list, but.
Yes.
The motion passes. Uh, moving on to item B one, the sheriffs, this is to ratify and approve modifications to interlocal agreements with the US Marshal Service for the East Hidalgo Detention Center and Coastal Bend Detention Center. This is simply, um, they are increasing their mileage reimbursement, and this is, just goes through us. It we, doesn't cost the county anything. We do their payroll for them, and they have to have it come through court in order for us to make those changes, so I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to C one, discuss and consider authorizing and approving the award and execution of an agreement with the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville for the administration of the Noasis County Colonia Self-Help Program, and do you wanna cover that one?
Yes, Judge, uh, what did you want?
C one, um, is this yours, Commissioner? I thought Anna was maybe gonna do this.
Go ahead, Anna.
Yes.
Yes, we're happy to move this forward, and we're looking forward to it. Uh, this contract will help us get started and work on the Colonia Self-Help Grant. Um, we do have the representatives here with, uh, CDCB that can give us, uh, can answer any questions, and we're all looking forward to get it going. We still have till December twenty-six, uh, two thousand twenty-six, and, uh, so I'll let you, uh, this is Leo Barera.
I think if he could just give us a little quick update of what all, this, moving forward with this, what are the options for us? And there's so many things included with this that can help our people in our communities, so can you just do something like that?
Yes, the, the Colonia Self-Help is, uh, awarded through the Texas Department of T eight Housing and Community Affairs.
Yes.
Sorry, it's a long acronym, it's used to, um, we have, so, the court selected five Colonias to, uh, be part of this. Uh, so it's basically to get benchmarks, and those are Cindy Park, Ranch, Jay Lynn, um, Blue Bonnet, and Banquete, so.
And he can speak if he wants to talk about it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Would love to answer any questions, but I know just the highlights of the contract are, it's enough to do four reconstructions in, in the Colonias. Um, we'll also be purchasing tools to run a tool lending library.
That's what I wanted, more people to see that, what we're gonna be doing, yes.
For sure, and I think we have, uh, we have folks in the community now, actually today, that'll be going through some of the Colonias, just knocking door to door to start kind of ramping up the marketing to let folks know of the, the services that we're gonna provide. And then there's also, uh, technology classes that are part of the program as well.
Thank you.
So, it'll be like a pop-up computer lab with laptops, and people can come and just learn different things. So, we're looking forward to the opportunity to, to work in the county.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course.
How many people you have here in Noasis County? How many people you have staff?
Staff? Right now, we have one. Uh, she just started, um, but we'll be look, looking to grow that as well. Um, we also have some board representation, uh, here as well, so, but we, a- as programs expand and our services expand, we'll be looking to adding more staff.
Very good.
And then, of course, for all construction services, we use local folks, so we'll, you know, approach, we're doing that now too, kind of ramping up our local subs, local GCs, to get them involved.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanna say thank, 'cause this'll benefit all the people in the rural areas, right? Anybody?
The Colonias.
Yeah, most of the Colonias.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
This'll benefit a lot of people in the, in the Colonias, in the rural areas?
Yes, it's, it'll be primarily for the five Colonias that were identified, and then what happens is like, in the future grant, let's say there's some different Colonias you wanna target in your precinct or district, um, you could, you could change the Colonia potentially for a future, uh, award.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
County Judge, may I address? I'm Judy Tell, and I'm local and have been for several years, and I'm on the board of CDCB. I helped organize a advisory committee locally. I'm very proud to be a part of that, that has helped CDCB enter into this area where they've been trying for a few years, and I'm very happy to say this is going to really help not, uh, launch our efforts here in Noasis County, particularly for the Colonias where so much help is needed and has not, as I understand it, been happening even though the money's available. We're also doing a project here in Corpus Christi, um, and looking at both, uh, Clayboro County as well as Bava Fudias for more, uh, affordable housing, and we're very happy to be here, and thank you so much for approving this, which I'm sure you will do.
Thank you, Judy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, and thank you all for being here, yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, Public Works, discuss and consider approving the award and execution of ARPA-funded contractor agreement with DLF for the Hilltop Community Center renovation in the, um, amount of nine million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand. And this is not only ARPA-funded, let me be clear, this is ARPA-funded, so it's, it's not solely ARPA, yes. So, um, thank you. Mr. Richter, you wanna talk about this? I know we've gone round and round about this, but I think we're at the end and have a signed contract ready to move forward. We need to get this going, so.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it has been a journey, but I think we're at a good place and appreciate the court's support in helping us, helping us get there. Uh, I'll just recap a little bit where, kinda where we started. As you know, we started with some, some very ambitious, uh, uh, plans and notions, and we've had to pare them back to meet the budgets and the available funds. Where we are right now, we have, um, we've deleted pretty much all of the new construction portion of the original design, with the exception of the public restrooms and the new storage facility, which will replace a, an, a metal building that kind of needs to go away anyway, so that new, that is new construction. The rest of the money is all in renovations of the existing wings. The, the existing entrance and foyer will be renovated and, and, and improved significantly to where it looks really nice, but it's the, it's basically the existing entrance and foyer, and the three northernmost wings, what we call A, B, and C, are going to be, uh, re- renovated consistent with the original design, meaning entirely, we're really torn back to bare structure and, uh, new air conditioning, new electrical, new finishes, new windows, n- new exterior envelope. So those three wings will, will be, you know, very high performance and it's essentially like new. The remaining three rings will have other levels of renovation. All of them will get new windows. So the, so all six wing, wings will have new windows, which is gonna have a very significant impact on the appearances of the building. Wing E, which is where WIC will be, will have i- uh, interior renovations and air conditioning, rev- new air conditioning, but not new like from scratch like the, uh, the first three wings, but it will be replace, the existing air conditioning systems will be replaced, but not to the same level of performance as, as wings A, B, and C. Uh, wings E and F will be just the exterior, just the windows, the interiors of E and F, which is primarily the voting area, uh, voting machines and voting areas, the interiors will be left entirely as is. Uh, the, so basically, the objective of upgrading the appearances of the entire building is achieved. The objective of, of significantly redoing the majority of the square footages of the building is achieved, um, within the available funds.
Did you say D would have interior renovations, AC and windows? I, I thought I heard you say E, and then you said E and F, I'm just making sure I'm getting this right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I may have misstated.
No, no, I may have heard wrong.
D and F are substant, interior are, are unchanged, but have, D and F, yeah, they're, D is a dog and F as in Frank.
Except for windows.
Except for windows, and they are all, they all have new windows. Wing E is where WIC is going to be. That's the one that has, uh, interior renovations, upgrades to the air conditioning, and new windows, and that's where, yeah, so.
So D and F are having windows and what else?
That's it.
Okay, but is D or F, wh- which one is where our election equipment is? Sorry. Where's the election equipment?
It's in D.
Okay, and then?
And then F is where voting happens, I think D, D is primarily storage.
I thought it was only gonna be paint and facelift. I didn't think it was gonna be any major improvements.
It's gonna, it's, I think it's gonna be a facelift here, it's gonna be inside and out, I think. That's what the last time I heard. Juan, on the election, uh, on the election equipment, there wasn't that gonna be in the renovation inside, the, the upgrade?
One of those, one of those three fully renovated.
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner, that's one thing that we're looking at separately, um, but I'm, I guess regarding the modifications, I think we were just doing the windows, right? On this one, on, yeah, they were just planning on doing the windows, Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
I think when, when, based on the new modifications, they were, they were planning on just doing the windows.
On what?
For, for the space for, uh.
Elections? Elections?
That's correct.
We're doing one, what do you mean, I don't underst- I don't understand.
In other words, uh, when we were looking at initially, prior to making these modifications, we were looking at it as a separate contract to make those modifications, uh, when these modifications, I guess now with the, the new revisions, uh, they just, uh, included just the windows, Commissioner.
So how did we go from the storage building, that stuff, to, I thought all of these were gonna be touched? Who, what's in the storage building? Why are we building a new storage building there? Why not use that? Yeah.
No one's called it again from.
I thought y'all went out and looked at the buildings.
Not, not since, not since the modification, we did, but then, Mr. Richter, we haven't been contacted by.
The last time, the last time.
They went out and looked at your space, they all did.
Yeah, the last time we went out there, I remember we, we told you, and then, uh, and then thinking you were, you were there, but.
Right.
Uh, we, the inside of the elections was supposed to be actually kinda upgraded, you know, not, um, not renovated the whole thing, but upgraded as far as the, the floors, the windows.
The restroom.
The restroom.
Yeah.
And the ceiling tiles.
The ceiling tiles are falling, yeah, it's bad.
And the walls, they were supposed to be shelves.
That's in the F, the voting room.
So I think that, that one really needs to be, I mean, that, I, I don't know what, what, what happened to the change or who changed it or whatever.
Well, we, I mean, the, my understanding was that the, the, sort of the bottom line objective was to make the exteriors look consistent and improved and improve as much of the interiors as we could, and we basically were able to achieve that with, th- with the exception of E and F. And D and F, thank you, sorry, Brent, I don't know why I keep thinking E and F. D and F, uh, and those are basically exterior but not interior improvements. And I, if, I, I, it was my understanding that the county might pursue those improvements under, under separate funds, but th- there wasn't enough in this budget to get, to do that.
I know, 'cause they cut it, but I'm saying, but I thought there was gonna be other funds, Juan, did we talk about some other funds that, that were supposed to actually upgrade that, that, the equipment, uh?
Uh, Juan was going to do those interior things on.
I think, I think we're looking at, I think we're looking at other funds, Commissioner, for that. Um, I can't recollect which funds they were coming from, but, uh, I'll, I'll take a look at that, Commissioner.
Yeah, but that one, that one, that one really needs to.
Yes, sir.
The F, for sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but I still, was the storage facility a part of the original thing? I don't remember the storage facility, and you said that changed.
The storage.
The new building, the new storage.
There's a, essentially, it's a garage that they, they, they store the lawn equipment and, and maintenance, you know, equipment, and, uh, it, the, the existing buildings are not really suitable for that, but that metal building that sits right in the middle of one of the courtyards is where that's provided, and we had in the original pro, a bid, a bid alternate to build a new garage and some new public restrooms, uh, and, and that we rolled into the base bid of this new project, uh, but not a, none of the other new construction.
Okay, I just didn't recall, I remember the building.
How much is that? How much is the new garage and the public restrooms? 'Cause I'm, I'm, 'cause my next question's gonna be, I don't know why we need more public restrooms, but I, I'm not saying we don't, I'm just asking, do we need more public restrooms, or do we need to do what we're talking about needing to do on F or D? I'm sorry, I can't remember F?
D and F.
I mean, is.
F is the one that she has people in for both.
F.
David F.
Right, so how much is the, for a new garage and new public restrooms? Just curious.
I don't know if that's separate in there.
I don't, I don't think he had that broken down.
Yes, the, uh, eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand for new restrooms in a, in a garage?
To demolish, to demolish the, the existing garage and to build new restrooms and the new storage garage, eight hundred.
Well, we could shift some of that over to doing what we need on, on F, right? I mean, where, where are the restrooms going and why is there a need for new restrooms? 'Cause there's a lot of restrooms out there, right?
Well, they, there, there are, but in, in the course of, of renovating the, the three main wings, which we're tearing back to, to zero, to get, to be, to fully renovate those main three wings, it's much more practical to, to build new restrooms to serve those. And, uh, it, the, the existing restrooms are sort of sporadic and not, you know, not particularly convenient to the, to the total. They're more department-oriented, and the, the new restrooms basically provide new central restrooms for the facility.
And they are outside in a separate location? You have to go outside of any of these wings to go there, and the, like, more for outdoor use? If people are in the, inside, they can use those as well?
That, that's correct, but well, they're really more for the, for the meeting rooms and the community center, where, which are all accessed by going outside anyway. But they, in open covered breezeways, that, now there is, the, there is one set of, uh, it's really just a single restroom uh, for, for, um, the administration, uh, because the, the administration wing now is inside of wi- of wing A.
Could do the drawing of this, maybe we could visualize it, 'cause I'm just, I mean, I, I really thought we were gonna do F, too, I, I thought that was. 'Cause I mean, I thought, that's when you went out there, and I thought y'all had it in there, and.
'Cause I thought they were gonna do all three of them, you know, but.
They're doing three.
Well, but eight hundred thousand for a garage and two new restrooms, that's a, that's a huge number. I gotta see, I just need to see why we're spending, why we need new restrooms out there. I don't, I need a visi, I just need a visual at least.
We have, we have, we have, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I wasn't prepared to, to show that. The, um, you know, there's, every facility has, has restroom fixture counts that are required by code and just by, just by practicality, and so we need to provide the proper number of restrooms. Some of them are associated with departments like WIC or like the administration, but a good many of them are associated with the community center and the meeting rooms associated with the community center. And these restrooms are really, they're not just dedicated to that, but that's their primary for, purpose.
So are these additional restrooms for the facility that we already, don't already have?
Well, we, the, when we fully renovated the first three wings, you know, there are restrooms that are demolished, and if you, it's hard, I mean, it's hard to envision, but you have some old restrooms, and you're tearing out the whole wing, rebuilding it brand-new, you know, it doesn't.
So you're putting those restrooms back?
Yeah, yeah, we're bringing back.
So are these new restrooms that we don't currently have out there? Like, and, like, if, do we have ten restrooms, and we're going to twelve, or nine, or we're going to eleven?
I couldn't say, but I, I think our fixture count is very similar to what we have now, maybe one or two more fixtures, but fundamentally, this new restroom, this public restroom building is serving the three wings that are being completely gutted and built back like new. And it just was more practical, because go, putting plumbing and into the existing wing, it displaces other activities. Uh, it's, and plus, it's, it was a more, much more significant redesign of the original d- design. When we presented the strategy for moving forward, we were gonna try to keep the design intact for the three, the three main wings, the three first wings, and these restrooms are sort of ancillary to that.
Juan, excuse me, Mr. Richter, are you talking about the restrooms that have been blocked off when they get, uh?
Yep.
Maybe, there's some restrooms that people can't get to, 'cause they've been, they've been blocked off from, from the public, are those the ones you're talking about?
You know, it's not any particular restrooms, it's the, it's, I guess you could say it's the restrooms that serve wings A, B, and C.
'Cause there are some restrooms that, that were in use, and then when they get sent up of ADA work, they didn't, they didn't, they, I think they, they said it was too complicated to get to them.
I think there may be one or two restrooms like that. Honestly, I can't speak to that with confidence, because we, we, we haven't actually visited this topic for a while. This is, this was something that was done back in the early part of the design.
Well, I know there's, there's about two of them that I've seen that are completely blocked off, that people cannot use at all, uh, 'cause, uh, what I understand, uh, they said it was too, uh, complicated to get to doing the ADA work.
I mean, we, you know, one could, one could.
But that's a good question, but that doesn't sound like this is what this is, Commissioner. This sounds like this is two new restrooms and a completely new building, right?
Two, two, yeah, and, yes, two new restrooms and a.
This is a whole new structure, right? It's what you're describing today? It's a, it's a new structure for these restrooms?
It's a new structure that essentially closes in the end between two wings, between.
Right, it's a new structure.
Connected to two wings, or is it connected to them?
So this is something that's not currently there that we're adding to restrooms, which?
Two restrooms and the maintenance facility, because the, because, honestly, if we were to take, if we were to take, uh, an existing portion of the building and renovate it to provide the, with the plumbing and air conditioning and tile and everything to, to provide, you know, just new restrooms within existing wings, the cost would approach what this is.
So, and F is the one, Kara, that you use for voting?
For elections, yes.
So. No, I mean, is this where people go to, to vote?
Yes.
So which one are you, I, I.
No, we're E.
In your microphone, please.
Wait, you're, so, help me out here, E is, I know, I, I wish we had a visual of this, this is.
Election is E, which is where they vote. The other one is where you actually have your equipment.
Correct.
Which is. Which is, with, E is, is the one that's getting interior renovations, AC.
It would be F.
But he said, I thought he said that was, you said that was WIC. You said WIC was E. That's not Cara then. If I'm not mistaken, my notes say you said.
WIC is E.
WIC is E. Okay, so Cara is D and F?
Correct.
Elections and voter equipment, D and F.
So we're, if I'm understanding this right, we're not renovating the area where people go to vote. Is that right? Huh?
That's correct. That's, that's correct.
That's the one area that we get, you know, that's where the one area that we use a lot. I don't even get any sense. I mean, I know that's what you were trying to get done.
Yeah, but, and I don't know, you know, but I don't know how much more they cut, but.
No, but they didn't cut anymore. It's the same number.
We haven't cut much when we went out there, but I'm just saying on the other one, on the elections.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, but it was, it, it was my, it was my understanding and impression that the, that the, the facilities used for voting were suitable for voting and that, and that that was, it should just be maintained and we were fixing the exterior.
That one only needed the, the central air, that, that one actually only needed the central air and, and some windows or something, but.
I mean, yes, that needed to be fixed, but it's, the bathrooms, the ceiling's falling in, it's awful.
It was just a kind of an upgrade.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be that much for an upgrade. I mean, I don't know what, what are we looking at? But, but whatever it takes, I guess is one. We've got the Hilltop going, so we need to do what we need to do. We've got another million dollars somewhere.
But you don't need a million dollars for.
How much is it going to take to do that? You went out there and looked at it.
A couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was just a few.
Couple hundred thousand?
Kind of rough estimate, Juan, that we, you came up with? Remember we did a rough estimate on the.
Commissioner, when we're, when we're looking at it, to do the, to cover up the windows, to redo the sitting tiles, redo, take out the flooring.
He's already replacing the windows and everything, he says.
That's the equipment.
But that's, that's what we had looked at, Judge. You're probably, we're looking about under a hundred thousand, Commissioner, is what we looked at.
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand.
Yeah, and how about upgrading the, the voting area where they vote?
On that one, Commissioner, we didn't look at that one at that time. We had just looked at the storage where the equipment, for the voting, where the voting equipment was being stored. But, but we didn't look at that other one.
So the voting area, it's okay except for the bathrooms and the.
My, my understanding.
Ceiling, paint, whatever, ceiling tiles.
No, he said the voting area.
You got to go to the microphone, that word, you can't talk.
We're talking about two different buildings.
You're talking two different sections. What Cara's, what Commissioner's talking about is that F wing, which is the last wing right there.
No.
Cara's section is the wing that's right there. That's her section. That's the, the middle section is the one that, where she stores her equipment and stuff. That's the one that needs the bathrooms and the flooring, the painting and all.
That's, that's.
That's the middle section.
The middle, that's D or F?
That's, that's the middle.
That's D or F?
D.
Okay, so D, is, is, D is where the, she stores equipment?
She stores her equipment.
And we know, we also work out there. It's not just storing, that we work out there.
Store and work, okay. But nobody, but then F is where they vote?
F is where they vote, which is the last wing, which is the last one on the bottom, that one.
The last one.
That was renovated probably about ten years ago. And the biggest problem we have there is we need to move the ACs off the roof onto the ground. Otherwise, the building has brand new ADA rely, bathrooms, it can be cut into two, two sections. But our biggest problem is the ACs need to be moved to the ground because they're perforated the roof, of course, but they're, they've used their lifetime. So otherwise, that, that one is, is okay.
What was the amount we figured for the, what was, you came up with something for the ACs on that one? What was it? The.
We had looked at about sixty thousand dollars, Commissioner.
Yeah, we're not talking a million bucks here. We're talking a couple hundred.
So a couple hundred thousand and we could get her F, where the people come in and vote renovated to something?
D and F.
Not including, you're already doing the windows on everything, so that wouldn't include that in the two hundred, so.
No, two hundred's for D and F, Judge.
Yes, for D and F both, we could do the additional things.
Well, right, but I mean, it's not a million.
No, so I, I, can we find, do we have enough unallocated additional ARPA money to put towards something like this? How are we come up with the other two hundred or capital?
They got anything for countywide money left?
Countywide, I don't know how much is left now.
Oh, we do have some, no, we did have some, we haven't allocated countywide, didn't we?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a little bit.
I mean, for, yeah, I mean.
I mean, but there's unallocated funds also, but are we talking separate from this contract? Is it not going to be a separate deal? Are we even going to add it to?
I mean, if, I, I don't understand the need for building two new restrooms and the storage shed. I think you can buy a metal storage shed. I don't get this, right? I'm going to be honest. I don't understand building a new storage shed when you can go buy a metal storage shed for, you're talking about for, 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 for lawnmowers, we're going to build a new building? That just, that just, I'm sorry, that didn't equate for me. Like, we can go buy a storage shed and set it out there. We own a gazillion acres out there with no, and why are we? How much does that storage shed costing of the eight hundred thousand? That, that's an enormous amount for a storage shed.
We haven't, we have not priced that. We can, we can price that.
That's not in the eight hundred?
It's in, no, it is. It's not broken out. It's not broken out.
And a storage shed is eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't understand the need for.
Majority would be in, the, the, the storage is about sixty percent of the square footage. But the restrooms are going to be the majority of the cost because, yeah.
Sure, I get that. But sixty percent of that's storage?
Sixty percent of the new building is the, is the vehicle storage portion of it. And, you know, it was, it's, it's done that way to try to bring the entire building up to a uniform standard of, of quality and appearance. And, and, you know, the existing metal building, which we had, is price, we had price to keep it. But it, but it's, it's not, it's not very attractive and it's sitting right in the middle of a courtyard. And if we didn't, I mean, if we didn't execute that, that, that bid alternate, then we would have to find an appropriate solution for the restrooms. And that's more, you know, there's cost and redesign and whatnot for that.
At this point, I don't get the restrooms, but.
I don't want to bring it back.
I, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. The storage building's a big problem to me because if you're telling me that's sixty percent of what we're talking about.
Sixty percent of the square footage.
Right, so that's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars for a storage shed. That, I mean, that, that right there would take care of D and F. And then we could go buy some storage facilities or some, I mean, no offense, but I mean, this isn't our house. This isn't, it doesn't need to look like the rest of the building.
Yeah, one thing that would be relatively expedient to price would be to just delete the portion of that building that is the storage, the garage, the storage facility, and keep the building that you got right now. Because some of the cost is for demolition, removal, and cleaning up where the existing building is. And then you, then you, you know, that's a quick solution. If we were to completely delete that building, it's very significant redesign because we have to, because it involves plumbing and mechanical and everything. That was another reason that we, we felt like it was not prudent to delete that and then have to do redesign and probably spend more money to renovate the interior for new restrooms than to build them ground up, new restrooms. And so, you know, at some point, you're just, you're just chasing, you know, money that's not going to be there.
Okay, so I'm off the restroom argument for the moment. I'm on the storage shed. So I'm asking, and I'll ask Mr. Hernandez or whoever wants to jump in here, would it not be practical to just leave that storage shed alone for now and shift that money, which sounds like it's going to be two hundred thousand plus because you got demo in there too, and move that to D and F and take care of what's needed at D and F? And then we truly are touching that entire facility. And that is going to be a home run for Commissioner Hernandez and this court because that's, because you're going, otherwise you're going to leave the voting public in a crappy wing. No offense, that hasn't, that's where people go in.
It's their building.
I'm just trying to come up with something here. I'll get off the restrooms.
Does that change our ability to move forward with this contract? Is that, is that a significant change or can we move forward?
No, that, I was, I, my opinion is that that's, that's the sort of change that can be executed in a change order expediently.
Awesome, awesome. Then I, I think that's a better idea of moving forward, yeah.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I agree. I mean, let's, let's keep on going.
I'm trying, I don't, I can't hear, I'm sorry.
No, I agree. Let's go forward.
Okay, so are you okay then?
Yes.
Leaving the storage shed alone and moving that money to D and F?
Yes, sir, I am. You know, I mean, this is a county, countywide project and I appreciate your input and it makes sense. So, yeah, let's get it done. Mr. Richter, I appreciate what you've done. I know it's been a big headache for you, but let's, let's keep going and get this project done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I agree.
So I would make a motion then to amend whatever we're passing today to eliminate.
Change order.
However you want to do it, that we're amending what is proposed in front of us today to where we're, we're changing, we're taking out the storage.
Wait, 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 wait. Michael's telling us we can't do it that way.
I'm not saying you can't. I'm not saying you can't.
Yeah.
You want to tell me how to say it?
Y'all do whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
But I think what y'all described was that this idea would come about in the form of a change order. So I think what you might want to do is pass the contract as is, subject to.
Oh, okay.
Subject to a change order being brought back specifically as, as y'all described.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Subject to the, as long as, okay, but at the, the contract as is.
Because a change order is, is after an original contract is made. So we do the contract and we discover there's an issue that we need to solve. And then that discussion happens between the architect and the contractor and Juan. And then they come back to the court and they give you the change order details. And at that point is when the court would vote to approve that change order.
You can do it before.
If you do it before, as you're suggesting, we got to rewrite the contract and come back.
It could be done before, but it's going to become a mess doing it that way.
That's, that's a fair explanation that I can, that's, that's a fair explanation that I can live with as long as it's clear what the intent of the court is, which is to approve the contract subject to a change order being executed that eliminates the storage unit and removes that and places those funds to renovate D and F. That would be the motion, right?
Yes, and then I would just add on to that, as Grants has us do when we have partial funding, is that the state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of two million, nine hundred thousand dollars and zero cents is where that portion of the, of the funding is coming from. And that's clearly stated on the contract as well.
Yes, second, that motion.
At, at the risk of complicating this further, I hope this means that we are able to actually execute the contract now. Because if, if it's, if we wait on executing the contract until we have the actual dollars for the change, we have design work to do. We have to, to, to reduce that building. There's structure involved. There's mechanical involved. We got design work, first of all, just to lop off the, the, the portion of the building that we're deleting. And then to spend it back on the, on these new, we have to get into these new wings and determine where it needs to be spent, how, where, and have that priced. The logistics of the pricing of this change is going to take some time.
That's why he said to go ahead and pass the contract today.
I just want to be sure because when you said, when you said subject to, I was afraid that maybe that meant that you were going to wait on executing until.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
We, we wanted you to know our direction for you when you're doing that, yes.
We get, we need to move this forward.
Yes, so we have a motion and a second to approve this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D one. Oh, that was it, D one. Sorry, we already did that one.
Judge, I got one, one question. Again, we're not figuring this out completely, I guess, because we damn tell them to do that. You know, he's going to go back, redesign something that the other two are going to keep. So there's going to be an extra cost for that, right, Juan?
It costs him every time he has to go back and change, yes, yes.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Fortunately, it, it seems like a simple thing. If you're not doing the new building, just doing the restrooms, it doesn't seem like that's a major issue or design change, so, yeah.
But you start, start the contract and then you do a change order in the middle.
You have to start it to then do the change order, yeah. Okay, item number two then. Are we good, guys? Okay, item number two. Discuss and consider approval of a change order number two for the Oasis County Veterans and Community Services renovation project. I think this is increasing by six thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Has, I have a note in here. Has, has the county attorney looked at this? What are we doing with this?
I, well, we just need some clarification. I was told that the one attached was not the same as the one that was reviewed or there's one that has not been reviewed by our office. And I was wondering if.
Okay, let's stress for right now, this is a good time to bring this up, that whatever y'all bring for our changes need to have, be the same thing that you turn into the county attorney's office that they say they have looked at. Let's make sure if anything changes in the process for every department. Anything comes forward at the last minute, that it goes through that same process and you are presenting what has already been approved. So has this one done so? Why is this different or is this something?
Judge, I think we, we added here in the last, I think there was minor modifications that came wanted on the, on the change order. With it, we did add that rubbish. We gave it to.
Okay, so it just hasn't come back to us, but you've added what was requested?
It was, it was added.
Okay, so.
What was added then? Tell us what was added.
I don't have it in front of me, but I know that there was some information that was added to the, I guess, on the, on the adjustment contract. But it, it's been, it's been tinker. I know we.
So this is already done. We have to pay for it anyway. You've already done this work, so it's after the fact, yes.
That's correct, Judge. It's already completed.
The changes recommended by our office were only, I think, to keep it in compliance with the CFRs and things like that, so.
That's what they do.
That's what we would have.
Okay. And the funds are still there. The available funds are still there, so, yes. Do I have a motion to approve? We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in, or any other discussion? Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of amendment number one to the professional agreement between Oasis County and LBL Architects, DBA Shelter Planners of America for the Oasis County Animal Care Facility. This is a name change only, I understand?
That's correct, Judge.
Yes, so I'll make the motion to pass.
Second discussion, Judge.
Yes.
So what does this do to our timeline, Juan or Michael, as far as moving this along?
No, it won't slow it down.
No hiccups?
No, sir.
Yes, microphone, Michael.
Fortunately, the DBA remains the same, so we're still doing business with Shelter Planners of America on that side of the contract, so it does not slow us down like that.
That was my biggest worry is like, oh, we're going to have to slow down again, so, all right, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Judge.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you, yes. Item number E one, purchasing. Discuss and consider conditional selection of Amistad Community Health Center for the Calderon Building Primary Care Services. And this is a lease agreement with them for them to utilize our building.
Correct, yes, just a lease of space.
Second, we, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Now, we are at the auditors. Do we all?
But doctors here from Amistad?
Uh huh. Oh, do you all want to speak about it? We were just happy. I didn't realize you were sitting there. I saw you earlier and I thought too worthy, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, Doc.
Yes, no, thank you so much for being here, yes, both you. And thank you for my tour the other day. Yes, thank you.
Oh, nice to know you do that.
Thanks for pointing that out, Commissioner. Do we need to wait until Commissioner Hernandez is back in here for the vote on this for you, item number one? Dale?
Probably, yes.
Okay, we will give him a minute, so we'll move on to item number two. Approve the monthly financial report for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the nine months ending July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Your Honor, we provide you the monthly financial report for July thirty-first. That would remain sixteen percent of the year remaining balances. We've gone through and showed you the amount of revenue collected in page five for each of the funds and as well as the expenses of each, each of the funds, showing what are possible, fund balance at this time would be. would be for, for each. Uh, going through the non-major funds, there, there are no issues of concerning for revenue expenses. They're all doing very, very well. If you look at the general fund on page 62, I believe it is, let's see, 61, you'll see that currently we've, we've, we have 30% of our budget remaining with 16% of the year available. Uh, we don't show a few of items here, but, but that's relatively promising. However, as we know, we could close the end of the year, a lot of departments are using some of their, their budgets. So we expect to have, when the year ends, we'll probably be around 100% collection of our revenue hopefully. And that looks like it's promising. However, our expenses are going to be closer to 95, 96%. We're normally there 92%. So that will be a challenging on where our, our fund balance will end year, year balances. Uh, for other schedules or transfers and our deposits for our summary revenue reports from each of the departments are here in the, in the report. I'll be glad to answer any question you might have, but that is the monthly finance report for the month of July 31st, 2024.
Judge, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Um, Dale, I know you, there were some, uh, the county clerk had some discrepancies with her, her numbers on here. Have y'all resolved that?
Those are getting resolved, yes.
But they're, are they resolved on this report?
Uh, they should probably be in the August report.
In the next month?
So.
Next, yes, next report.
Can we, right, can we, uh, pass this subject to those being corrected?
Yes, yes.
We could.
We know, I mean, I know mine, there are lots of them. And so we had sent an email on August 7th, right after court, to say, hey, you need to correct this. They weren't corrected till today.
Where's the list that needs to be corrected? Do you have that?
So it had been, it's not corrected in this, in this?
Correct. It'll be corrected on the next report.
Okay. So if we pass this today, it would be subject to
Subject to the corrections.
The corrections being made for this report, going back and making this, the corrections in this report and in the August report. So
Yes, that's correct.
I would, I, I'm okay with that as long as we amend this July report later. Cause I know we, we need to pass these reports, but if they're not correct, we can't. But if we, if we pass it and then subject to it being corrected, not just August, but July, then that should get this one corrected.
That's correct.
Well, it goes back as it started.
Well, or however.
The whole fiscal, I mean.
However, that's a good point. How, subject to it being corrected for the year.
Yes, yes.
Let's say it that way.
Is that because of workday, these corrections, or transitioning?
It's a long question.
Not moved over or what, or just a, since we've had to manually enter a lot of things, maybe just a
I don't know why.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell you. I mean, I'm sure that it's always going to be workday in five years, but it's going to be workday for 10 years.
Yeah. Well, and I've called other counties and it isn't uncommon for transitions in new accounting procedures there to be hiccups. So, um, hiccups and continual mistakes are two different things is why I'm kind of asking. Is this just one of the?
So, so these are the identified errors that I had previously addressed whenever I presented the monthly financial report. We are still working on correcting those. We lost both of our temporaries. Julian, who was our GL accounting assistant, he left to go to the city. We've had some turnover and so it's just delayed it a little bit. But like I said, those corrections are being posted as we speak. He's got the majority of them done. We are getting those corrected.
The issue I have is that they're posted, but they're posted in workday, which is with us. They're not posted to the public. So the public, what they're seeing is just wrong and inaccurate. That's, that's the issue I have with it.
Because this, so the new one in August will be the published one that will have the corrections on there.
I agree. But I guess also the issue is you can, you knew what you were submitting to this agenda was wrong. You knew, but you continue to submit and say, oh, there's mistakes and there's problems and we'll correct them. But you continued to submit these inaccurate financial reports.
Again, the expenses
Knowing they're wrong.
The expenses are reflected correctly. It's just where they're shown on the report is incorrect.
But again, that's an issue because it doesn't matter if they're, those are correct where, because it shows that if I'm at a deficit somewhere in my budget, when I'm really not, you just, y'all put it into the wrong category. It's still inaccurate. I mean, I get the, I just want, I just want the court to understand that. And I want the public to understand that, right? We work really hard, be good stewards with tax dollars. And when it's not reported accurately, it makes it look like that we're just spending money and not paying attention and we're wasting money. And that's not the case. And so I think I would appreciate the auditor's office knowing that you just need to get in there. These are your reports. You can go in there and just fix those numbers. If they're in the actual system, then you need to submit a correction with the report when you come into court this day. That way it can go with the minutes. That's all I'm asking.
So you would like them in the future with these changes to do like an amendment or something that lists every correction that was made in the previous monthly?
I think that's important. Yes.
How many do you have right there in front of you that you're talking about?
We have, I mean, we have.
Have you shared that with any of the commissioners as well? Will you share that information?
Yeah, we will. But again, when we sent the email on August 7th, the day after court, when, you know, we saw the issues, we saw the issues prior when we asked them.
Some of the questions had, or some of the issues had nothing to do with workday. For instance, the billings for elections overtime that you need to be moved to your elections because they were billed out.
Exactly.
That has absolutely nothing to do
Thank you. It has to do with y'all.
With workday.
Wait, let her finish. Don't talk over. Just a second.
It has nothing to do with workday. It's the process of y'all giving us the bill and us reviewing and preparing and posting it.
No, you're, I agree with you 100%. It's with y'all, doing y'all's part. Cause we give it to y'all.
Just like it takes you time to prepare the billing to the entities for the elections. It takes us time to review, post and make those changes. Process those, those postings. Yes, ma'am.
Thank, thank you for, thank you for, um, acknowledging the issue with y'all's office. I appreciate it. Thank you. No, thank you. And I know they are working on it and I understand that. I just would like for that to be a part of what you, you know, give to the commissioners' court, what you put on the agenda. And if you're gonna, if they're inaccurate, have something on there saying, these are not accurate. Or I, I guess just don't submit inaccurate numbers. And it's, no, hold on Lisa, please. Especially when you know, when you know that they're going to change. You know that. You know they're in the wrong bucket. Y'all just haven't gotten to it yet. And I understand turnover. Look, I, I do. I do.
I agree with the process being then you maybe if you're presenting something, you should present a page with a list of changes that are going to be made. And maybe that would solve it and makes it public. There are changes that are required. The problem I can see with this is these also have to be verified. Just because somebody turns it in, it's not necessarily a change that is going to be
Right. And I do, and I understand that.
So there's some time in there. And I think, um, what we're all asking is a little bit of patience between everybody, a little bit of cooperation and turning it in. And, um, let's just try to do the best. We're all human and we are going to have mistakes, but it shouldn't be the norm. So let's try a little bit harder to give accurate. And if it's presented here, even if it's just a list of the changes that are going to be coming forward in the next report, if something can show that, that you're working on it, that might be a, a solution that everybody can live with.
Yes, ma'am. Of course.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so are you still going with your, um, motion? Do we have a motion, Commissioner Chesney, to approve subject to the final changes being made?
Yes, ma'am. The, it would be to pass the rest of the report subject to the county clerk's, uh, corrections being made for the fiscal year.
Yes. I'll second that. And, um, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Um, item number three, approve the budget amendment number 12 for the fiscal year 2324.
There are two pages, Your Honor. The one, the first page one is for the general fund. Page two is for our coastal parks. For our general fund, uh, the district attorney's been filing, filling some of his vacancies reports and, uh, some of the vacancies that require a lot of training and that he has to send some of the staff. So he needs some travel to cover that. And he's been willing to reduce some of his other expenses to cover that expense. Uh, same thing with the medical examiner. They've had some vacancies and some overtime they need to cover. So they're able to cover some of the costs with the balances here. On the coastal parks, on page two, you'll see that they are, pardon me, again, with the vacancies and of course the, uh, summer year coming up is they got some overtime they need to take care of. And as we all know, the fuel prices are very high right now. So they had to move some cost to cover these expenses and they were willing to take that out of capital expense. My staff has looked over these budget change orders and the funds are there for these changes. And we submit budget change order number 12 for your review and acceptance.
I make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Um, any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Um, item number five is, um, I'm not missing something, right? Or the, no, four. I was like, I knew I was missing that. Approve the quarterly investment reports ending December 31st, 2023, March 31st, 2024, and June 30th, 2024. And the investment committee met with this and we all verified and, uh, agree with the totals on this. So I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. And item number five during this meeting, discuss and consider increasing the allowable limit percentage for diversifying the operating account portfolio by the type for the local government investment pools from 90% to 95%. The investment committee met and unanimous vote, um, approve this. I'm asking for Commissioner's Court approval.
Can you just explain? I read all this, but I don't really, why, what, just why? What's the why?
Explain that to your, uh, Commissioner. Uh, as we know in the process right now with the, where the inflation rates are and where the federal rates are at the moment, uh, the long-term investments we have possibility for are rather the same interest rate as our current, uh, pool funds. So right now, majority of our funds are invested in our local pool funds, which we have access to on a daily basis if we need the funds, where your CDs would be three or four years out. So we think that it's, we, we have a lot of our funds in our investment pool funds, not invested in long-term to be able to have the same basic interest rate we have at the moment, as well as being able to have access to the funds. So we're just trying to do that. That's why, cause right now most, majority of our funds are in our pools. Now, this might change because we know the federal rate and the interest rate rates might start going down. There might be a bigger gap between the long-term and short-term. But right now, there's not a big enough gap to invest long-term.
The rates are really good. And so we need to
So we can utilize this while it is. Yes, basically.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's just simple. The rates are great. We want to keep it there. And
Microphone.
The rates are wonderful. And if you, you move it, we're at 95 now, about 95, and we're supposed to be at 90. So if y'all don't approve this, we're have to take 5% out and
That's what I didn't understand.
That's it.
Okay. That, that, that I understand. Okay. I'm good with that. I just, okay.
Are you in the motion?
Sure.
Approved? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
The rates are good.
And Commissioner, you seconded? I'm sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez, was that your motion? Yes.
Did you second?
Did you second? I thought you said so moved. Yes. Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to pass. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. And I will have to come back to item number one because Commissioner Mottis left the room. If I could get everyone to stay here, uh, for a few minutes.
I have a question on the investment reports. Uh, I don't, I don't know what's number, I forgot what number it was.
Number four.
Yeah, number four. We said we all, we, we approved that. How do, how do we know it's correct? How, how do we, are we matching those with the bank statements? Their balance? Checking, check, checking balance or what?
They, yeah. So it's created in the, uh, in the auditor's office and then
There's a check of balance to it.
What we do from my office is that we actually have, yeah, like the balance is straight from banking. So we just, I mean, it really, it's exactly the same.
Do they match the bank statement?
Yes, yes. And now the investment committee, because of, uh, Care's office is getting the actual bank statements as well sent to us to verify.
We're just sending everything.
Yes.
It's good to have that data. So everyone gets
Yes. And now we are missing another commissioner. So we will wait again. Okay.
Okay.
We, um, will move on to item G one. Discuss and consider adopting an order to authorize and approve a request for proposals as a method of procurement for Commissioner's courtroom, the audio video conference equipment to, and to authorize the purchasing agent to publish a notice and delegate evaluation authority to a selection committee and related matters. Now that is a mouthful. This is something that we approved and the funding was approved for. And this just gives them the opportunity and authority to go forward and move with this. So I will make a motion to adopt an order to authorize going out for requests for proposals as a method of procurement for Commissioner's courtroom audio video project. And, um, what do we do with the rest of that? Michael, you want to help us out here? Sorry. The delegation authority for the selection committee.
And authorize the purchasing agent to publish a notice.
Thank you. Thank you. That wasn't on here.
Right. And delegate evaluation authority to a selection committee.
Did you get all of that?
I did.
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
It's a mouthful.
Yes.
And is this ARPA funds, Judge?
Hmm?
Is this ARPA funding?
Yes, we gave it for this courtroom to update. Yes. And
Did we do an update not too long ago, or is that a different part of our, our broadcasting capabilities?
Uh, I've been here about three and a half years in this position and we have not upgraded anything in here.
Maybe it's just a contract for Swag.
Uh, yeah. Uh, you will see annual payments for the Swagit streaming support.
I thought we did something with them relatively recently. It could have been pre-COVID and that could have been
Is that her camera there, that new equipment?
Four or five years ago. So maybe that's where it was. This is the new camera we got or, yeah.
Yeah, camera equipment.
Can recall, I thought we voted on something that dealt with the broadcasting capabilities of it. And maybe it was just a contract renewal? Is that what we did?
It's only an annual renewal. Yeah. We're not under contract with them.
So then maybe that's just what it is, is that it just seems so recent that that's what it was. Okay. Thank you.
I made the motion already and I won't try to repeat that. But yes, thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. So now I am going to go back to item F one. We, um, have to set the ceiling rate or set the rate for the 2024 tax rate for an Oasis County and then Oasis County Farm to Market. And, um, this will make them, we have to take a record vote and we have to authorize the publishing the appropriate notices. So.
Yes, Your Honor. We, uh, your, your staff and my staff has gone through several scenarios of, uh, what we would determine what the proposed budget will be when we're coming up forward. And those are the discussion items we brought to the court when the last budget workshop we had with a possibility of a, a cost of living adjustment at the moment. Uh, right now we're still finalizing the proposal to bring it to you. But, uh, to get the balances we probably need, uh, for, for those discussion items as well as that cost of living increase, uh, we are saying let's set the ceiling for the rate. That don't mean we're going to vote this rate, but this is where we need to probably start with going down from that point is the voter approved tax rate plus the unused increment. So the total tax rate we're proposing is .279379 with the general fund being .223004, the debt service .039369, the road fund .003159, and the unused increment is .013847. So we're proposing to do the voter approved rate with unused increment seating rate at .279379.
So, and, and this is just proposing, guys. So I will make the motion to, um, use the voter approved plus the unused increment tax rate at the .279379 rate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Myself and Commissioner Mottis are ayes. Commissioner Hernandez, this, aye?
Just to propose, right?
Yes, propose, yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez? It's a record vote. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Then the next one for the farm to market?
That was enclosed, Your Honor. That covered
That was enclosed. That covered all of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I was like writing those numbers down to remember and I had already lost you. I was going to have to get it again. So we're done here with that portion. Moving on, um, going into executive, I will need to bring up for C from executive. And, um, I will need a 5-0 vote to discuss an executive. And this is on the, um,
Which one?
Delivery business and financial issues related to the contract being negotiated and inter-local being Corpus, city of Corpus Christi and Oasis County Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Six. So, um, I will need a 5-0 vote. I'll make So I will need a 5-0 vote. I'll make the motion to take it into executive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we are going to go into executive session. Public notices, given that the Commissioners Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda items in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.0745, 551.076, 551.086, 551.087, the Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may in an open session take such actions as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Item A today is consult with the county attorney on legal issues related to the July 31st, 2024 claim of Hector Beltran and related matters. Texas Government Code 551.071. Item B, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to interlocal agreement between the City of Corpus Christi and Oasis County Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 6 and Related Matters. Texas Government Code 551.071. And item C, deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated and interlocal agreement between the City of Corpus Christi and Oasis County Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 6 and Related Matters. Texas Government Code 551.0725. Item D, consult with the county attorney regarding the hiring and rehiring employment process of county employees and take action in open session regarding a personnel policy rules if necessary. And I believe that would be 551.071. Jenny? There's no number attached to it.
I presume, yes.
And E, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassign duties, discipline dismissal of the assistant county librarian issue pursuant to 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. Discuss, consider, and take action in regular session if necessary, including authorizing a supplemental pay. And it is, what time? 11:37, and we are moving to executive. Thank you. It is 1:49, and we are back from executive. I have item A. Commissioner Modas, I believe, yes.
Yes, Judge, I have a motion. Motion to approve the July 31st, 2024 claim of Hector Beltran for $278.67 contingent on execution of all settlement and release documents, and allow the county judge to sign the related agreement, also to direct the clerk and the auditor's office to expedite payment.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to item E. Commissioner Chesney, I believe we have a couple of motions.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to move Ida Garza to temporary special advisor to the county library at the same pay, and to move Crystal Drilling as acting director with the pay associated with the director, and freezing Crystal Drilling's current position until further motion by the Commissioners Court.
I'll second that motion as well.
Her current position.
Her current position, because she's moving up today. I second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Do we have any adjournments in memory or anything? Anyone have one?
I have one, Judge.
Yes, go ahead.
Judge, Norma Fay Hannah passed away peacefully on Monday, August 12th, 2024, surrounded by her family comfortably in her home in Austin, Texas. She was 88 years old. She moved with her parents to Corpus Christi, Texas, where she attended and graduated from WBA High School in 1953. She attended Delmar College, where she met her lifelong best friend Lucy Hannah, that led her to meet Lucy's brother Donald E. Hannah, who had become her husband and life partner for 66 years. Norm adapted well to South Texas living. She taught piano and helped support Donald through dental school. She raised, taught, and intensely inspired her four children. She was a fascinating and resilient woman who was fiercely loyal to her family till the end. She enjoyed music, travel, nature, and was a very intellectual and well-read, modern woman. She was and always will remain, without a doubt, the rock of the Hannah family. Her sweet spirit, style, and grace will always be remembered to all who met her. She survived by her children Owen Essa Hannah, wife Teresa, Kelly Dawn Hannah, wife Nina, Kevin Patrick Hannah, and Ruby Christine Powell, husband John, and her grandchildren, who were the light of her life. Alexandria Hannah, Sarah Hannah, Austin Hannah, Cameron Hannah, Logan Hannah, Jackson Hannah, Jack Powell, and Mia Powell. Our condolences to the Hannah family on the loss of Norma Fay Hannah.
Absolutely. Any others, commissioners? If we could just have a moment of silence then, please, for the family. Yes, thank you very much. Our sincere condolences go out. It is 1:52, and this meeting is adjourned.